15th of September, 2023. It is 8:33 a.m. in the morning. As usual, we will start the meeting with our Chaplain Prayer and pledges. And we have Chaplain Gary and Marcella Jenkins here to lead us in both. If you will please stand.
Good morning, everyone. God bless you. Dear God, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work. Help our leaders to do not ask first, how do we fix this? But what do we need to do to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind us as a community, because we are forgetful from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants. And that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good for all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May we always be guided by the Spirit of love. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Repeat after me the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Lucy, if you will join me up front. This morning, we have a proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. And so those in the audience who are here to receive this, please come forward. Hispanic Heritage Month, observed annually from September 15th to October the 15th, is a time to celebrate and honor the rich cultural heritage, traditions, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States. During this month, we recognize the significant impact Latinos have made and continue to make in shaping our nation's history, economy, culture, and society. Latinos are driving prosperity, power, and progress, and their contributions are integral to the fabric of our nation. Hispanic progress is American progress, as Latinos are the majority-minority in the U.S. and a significant proportion of the country's youth, economy, and workforce. The Hispanic community is driven by the American dream with a strong belief in upward mobility and life improvement. Hispanics are the newest injection of energy to our country, representing a significant portion of population and workforce growth. Hispanics are young, hardworking, and optimistic with a strong belief in the value of hard work and higher aspirations for career success. Hispanics are critical to corporate America and the economy with a substantial GDP and a significant role in entrepreneurialship. Hispanic contributions are evident across multiple industries, including sports, culture, retailing, media, entertainment, agriculture, and more. Hispanic culture is shaping global culture, with Latin music becoming one of the top five most consumed music genres in the U.S. When faced with challenges, Hispanics consistently rise to the occasion, demonstrating remarkable progress in education and income growth. Hispanics represent sustained secular growth, contributing to our nation's progress through age, economic influence, population growth, and education attainment. The theme for Hispanic Heritage Month 2023 is Latinos Driving Prosperity, Power, and Progress in America, as designated by HispanicStar.org. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in San Angelo, Texas, and celebrate the rich heritage, contributions, and achievements of our Hispanic community.
Thank you, Mayor. Just think, everything that was read in the proclamation tells the story about why we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. We became an organization back in 2019. And when I say "we," it's the San Angelo Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center. We started an initiative to create a museum that will pay tribute to our contribution here in San Angelo and in the surrounding 15 counties. So we ask, if you can, to join us on Thursday, September the 21st, at 6:00 o'clock at the McNeese Convention Center for our first-ever Hispanic Heritage Month banquet. It will be a celebration kickoff for the total celebration of the month. And we're going to be honoring some of our members that have participated in shaping our community. So we thank you very much for this.
We will now open up the public comment portion of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the deus, again by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience today who would like to offer public comment?
Good morning. My name is Derek Darby, Single Member District 5. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I had some comments regarding an item on Consent Agenda, item number 5F. Just a bit of history. I'm an attorney. I represent Country Valley Construction.
I'm going to, you know what, Derek? I'm going to pull that item from Consent Agenda. So if you will just wait a minute, and then we will pull it, and you can finish with your remarks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anybody who would like to come forward for public comment?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Deidre Gonzalez, and I'm Single Member District 1. I am the President of the Railway Museum. I believe we have an item on executive session today. So I just kind of wanted to briefly say thank you very much for all that you all do for our community. I know that service is hard, and I want to express gratitude for the previous boards of the Railway Museum who have set this museum up. We celebrated our 25th anniversary last year. And so I think with what they built and with our ability to market and do events, we've really taken the museum to where it needs to be. The contract that we have was signed in 2019. And that was set with the previous board, then the board members we have right now. And we have accomplished everything that was asked in that contract. And we were asked to do expanded business hours, to put in a new HVAC system, to put in a safety fencing. All of that has been accomplished. And so I love the Railway Museum because I just think it's such a wonderful part of San Angelo's story. Many people have visited in the last three years. We have had other accomplishments as well. We received an award from the Texas Historic Commission for programming that we did, online programming that we did during COVID. And we have some wonderful goals. And we are a nonprofit. We have fundraised. We have been able to pay our bills successfully. We do have a lot of historic preservation things that we need assistance with, that we have put a lot of funding towards. So that is what we are asking, is for the contract to please be amended and to receive hot tax funds in historic preservation. And thank you so much for the opportunity. It's been a wonderful opportunity to serve the community, to see the children's smiling faces at Santa Fe Christmas. Over 1,000 people come to that event where Santa arrives by train. And I think that people really love the train market. And I think we have such a wonderful opportunity to keep this museum going for future generations. So we hope that you will support us. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Edwin Guthrie, District 1. I want to hopefully bring the attention that we could revisit the recycling fee on dealing with the trash pickup contract. As everybody knows, it's a 50-cent residential fee that goes directly to the Butz Recycling Center. And it's been multiple years, and it's become quite obvious that we're never going to reach the amount of recyclable material to do away with the 50-cent fee. First most, the recycling center does not recycle the heaviest material. No newspapers, no magazines, no glass. So basically, when you're just taking the lightest material at that tonnage, we're never going to reach that goal. And I don't understand why we don't revisit doing away with the 50-cent fee for the customers, due to the fact that all we're doing is subsidizing Butz Recycling business loan payment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we will move into the Consent Agenda. I'm going to start by asking that we pull Item E and Item F. Larry, do you have any items that you want to pull?
I'll pull E, but I, of course, have to recuse myself on B.
All right. Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Carrie?
You already pulled mine. Thank you.
Okay, Tom?
Same, nothing to pull.
No, ma'am.
Check, one, two.
All right, with that, may I have a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda with the exception of Items E and F?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of approving Items E and F, of approving the Consent Agenda with the exception of E and F, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, with that, I think Larry, well, he did, but the Consent Agenda, the two items we pulled, anyway, just make sure. Yeah, did you want to vote to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of Items E and F?
Yes.
Well, he's conflicted on one of the items, one of the consent items.
Okay, so you're not voting. So then the Consent Agenda with the exception of E and F passes 6-0. We will move into Item E, Consider an Amendment to the Tier's Incentive Policy Regarding Submission Requirements, Eligibility, and Priority of Accessibility Improvements. John?
Yeah, this is two different amendments to the Tier's policy. The first one was recommended by Councilman Miller. It's a change to allow eligibility for ADA improvements. It does two things. One, it lists ADA improvements specifically in the list of eligible items, including both interior and exterior improvements. You may recall that most Tier's projects, most of the eligible items are exterior only. There are a few exceptions, fire sprinkler systems, asbestos abatement, egress doors, that kind of thing. This would add improvements to make a facility more ADA accessible to that list of eligible improvements. It also adds it in our criteria rankings. It lists it as a high priority item. And so that's the ADA component. The other piece is, over recent cycles, the board has sent a few projects back for the applicant to prepare a more detailed site plan, so they can see what they're proposing. So we've proposed adding a site plan requirement, which we actually, they changed at the meeting to site plan or drawing. We don't want to say that they have to do a full-blown site plan like the development review process requires, but some sort of drawing showing what they're doing on the site. It would only apply if they're doing site improvements. If they're doing fire sprinklers inside the building, obviously, they wouldn't need a site plan. But if they're doing parking lots, landscaping, fencing, those kinds of things, they would have to show a site drawing showing what they're doing on the site. So fairly minor improvements, but those are the two improvements that are changes to the policy.
Since we are looking at changing some policies to the Tier's incentive policy, I want to add, if possible, the following, that grant requests for funding, those who have not applied or received funding shall take priority for funding. Multiple applications for the same address shall not take a priority or an equal standing.
Okay, there is a provision in there already that's similar to that. We could probably tweak that language. It does say that priority will be given to projects or people that have not received funding. Right now, it's worded "in the past year." So once the year's passed, you're on equal footing with everybody else. We could change that to a longer period or just get rid of the period and say, we always value somebody who's never gotten money over somebody who has, but there is a provision in there already.
Problem is, if, let's say you have $100,000, right? So then they say if there's six, let's say, five applicants, then the history has been that we give all five applicants the same amount of money.
Not always. Sometimes they've prioritized them. And in fact, the board has considered and not funded projects that had received funding before, when there were sufficient number of projects to give funding. But yeah, so there's really two choices. One is to leave that to the discretion of the board and council, or two, to more specifically write that into the policy. But that's, I defer to legal.
I just need to make sure I know what's currently in it. If you say there's language in there, I want to understand that language.
Sure, I can pull that up. And I guess while I'm doing that, if maybe we could get Teresa to answer the question. To what, can they make any change to the incentive policy without it coming from the board at this point? Or does it have to? Okay.
Would not want to go home with you tonight.
So the wording is sites and/or owners that have not received funding within the past year will be prioritized over those that have received funding. That's the current wording.
So, but it says, but does that refer to the same address? Or just, repeat that again, because?
So it says sites or owners. So if it's the same owner of a different site, that would count. If it's the same site, that would also count. So the same address is included in that.
So someone had multiple facilities or buildings?
Right, so if it's the same owner for multiple properties, they would be deprioritized if they've received funding in the past year.
Okay, that covers the issue. Other comments from Council? Larry?
Yes, it's wonderful that we've incentivized doing the ADA, but my question is, are teeth in there that requires people to make changes if they're receiving Tier's money?
There's not anything above and beyond what the normal building codes would require. So if you're doing a certain amount of work, or, you know, so for example, if you're remodeling your facility, but you're not touching the bathrooms, you don't necessarily have to bring them up to compliance. But if you're remodeling the bathroom, then you do have to bring it into compliance. And so we, at least as it is right now, we would only require ADA improvements if the building code requires it through that process, which in many cases, it would trigger it. But the Tier's policy does not place any additional burden above and beyond just the building code.
Oh, if it's exterior to the building and it's in violation of ADA, then there's a compelling reason for the people to correct that? Is that the way you're reading it?
Well, I think, yeah, the way we would look at it, we would let applicants know and encourage them to include that because it's an eligible expense. That's similar to some projects that didn't ask for a particular, like we had a project, you know, you can get up to 75,000 in the north. A project only asked for like 45,000, and they didn't include any landscaping. And we said, hey, you can get more money if you also include landscaping. So they did and got the money. So I think this would be similar. We would encourage them, hey, we noticed you didn't include any ADA improvements. You can get extra money if you'll do that as well.
But code would require ADA compliance?
Depending on what they're doing. Again, if they're not touching that piece. So for exterior improvements, let's say they're replacing windows, that wouldn't trigger making the doorway accessible if they're not doing anything to the doorway.
But if they were doing anything interior, it would?
It might. I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know all the thresholds, but if you're doing certain things, there are triggers that require it. But again, we, right now, we just default to whatever the building code triggers are that push you over the limit to having to bring it into compliance.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so may I have a motion for approval of Item E? So moved by Larry, seconded by Karen. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item F, Consider a Resolution Authorizing the Correction of a Scrivener's Error in Ordinance 2023-052 Regarding the Res zoning of Plan Development PD 23-04 on Riviera Lane in the Bentwood subdivision.
I'll just give you a brief overview of this. This was a plan development in Bentwood, went to the Planning Commission and Council. There were, there was a description in the staff report of what three changes were proposed in the plan development. It was basically single-family residential zoning, but with a change to the front setback, the floor area ratio, which is basically the coverage on the lot. There was no mention in the staff report of any change to the rear setback. We presented it to the Planning Commission. In fact, there was a question at the Planning Commission, does this change the rear setbacks? And the answer was no. Then it came to council, again, similar presentation to you all, listed the three items that were changing, did not mention anything about the rear setbacks. However, in the ordinance in your packet, a staff member inadvertently included a change to the rear setback. Part of the issue, I won't go into all the details, but the applicant originally requested RS3 zoning, which had the reduced setback. In the Planning Commission, there was some neighborhood opposition to the RS3, so they changed it to a plan development instead, going back to the RS1 standards. And so it should have been changed to the normal 20-foot rear setback instead of the 10. That piece of the ordinance didn't get updated correctly. So that's technically what was in your packet. Our belief, and I'll defer to, before I get in trouble, defer to legal if it gets into the legal issues. But basically, the short answer is, we believe there was no intention of Planning Commission or Council to adopt that change in the rear setback, and that was simply a typographical error, what the lawyers call a Scrivener's error. And so this is a resolution acknowledging that error and basically saying, here's what the ordinance was supposed to be adopted as.
But "supposed to" and "signed documents," do they not have validity? I mean, "supposed to" is kind of a whatever. It's not a very good word to use, "supposed to."
I think Derek's going to get up here, and he's going to argue that it does have validity, but, and I would do that if I had his client. But there is a Supreme Court case that essentially states very clearly that these kind of errors don't override the will of a governing body, nor would we want them to. Otherwise, we could just be like, oops, put it wrong, and just pass whatever we wanted to. So there's definitely a question there. But the precedent that we reviewed and looking at the board meetings and the council meetings and the way John presented it and what was in the staff report, there was never an intention by any body of the City of San Angelo to change that rear setback, nor did John present it as such. In fact, he presented exactly the opposite. These are the things, specific things, that are going to change regarding setbacks, and did not present that one. So Scrivener's errors, most cities have, either in their charter or in their Code of Ordinances, a rule that says staff can correct those things if you identify a error in a written document, because we review hundreds of documents for council meeting, those things happen, that we can just review it in-house. If we had had that rule or policy, we would have just corrected it to what was presented at council, and it never would have come. But because we don't have one of those rules and because that development is going to be built out, we thought it was prudent to bring it to you to make sure you're directing us to correct the record, so it's clear.
But it's a signed document, correct?
There is a signed document, but that does not reflect the action that was taken by this body.
It reflects, the signatures reflect what was, obviously, when you sign it, you are signing a document that says X, Y, and Z. Correct?
Yes, but there's often errors in documents that everybody signs. And that was one error in this ordinance. So yes, there was an error in the ordinance. That's why we're here today, asking to correct it.
So Brenda?
Go ahead, Tom.
So we approved what was presented, correct? And we voted on what was presented, right? Okay. And I will go, I've talked to parties on both sides of this. And each seems to have valid points moving forward. It's very unfortunate of the state people are in. But the whole point is, I think it falls back to, it is a planned development. But we voted on what was presented. We don't see it as it goes forward up here as a council. And so I get both parts of that. But I just want to make sure, my question's that I have been given lots of information, which was provided to me, not my own, but even when I went back and looked, it was an approval on what we presented, then the Scrivener's error happened after that. And it's very, very unfortunate that that happened. But I just, I want to make sure we got that comment in. And John was clear with me, said, you're held accountable for what you voted on versus what was presented, not what was documented. And so at that point, I'll get you back. I just think it's a super unfortunate situation here.
So any other questions or comments for John before Derek comes forward, makes comments? Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, my name is Derek Darby, Single Member District 5. And I agree with 99% of what Ms. James said. The code for the San Angelo City of Ordinances does not include the Scrivener's Error language that maybe some other cities have. But what it does have is Chapter 12, Exhibit A, Article 2, Section 210-G. There is a procedure to amend a plan development district. And it says, "Any amendments to the terms and conditions of an approved plan development district ordinance shall be subject to review and reconsideration in accordance with the procedures set forth in subsections A through F, which are the procedures for the initial approval of a plan development district." My position, and not to be repetitive of what I said at the Planning Commission- My position, and not to be repetitive of what I said at the Planning Commission, is there's a procedure to amend a planned development district. The ordinance that was included in y'all's packages, in the April 18th meeting and the May 4th meeting, has the ordinance. It's still online. I saw it when I was getting ready for the Planning Commission meeting. That ordinance is there. And if the intent of the developer, or the Planning Commission, or the Planning Department, or the Planning Commission, was to only change three items, then why didn't Exhibit B only include those three items that they wanted to change and leave everything else subject to RS1 zoning classification? That's been my whole point all along. There is a mechanism to amend a planned development district. I don't understand why something's trying to be recreated instead of just amending it. So that's the position I was gonna take this morning.
Could you clarify that, Teresa's, in layman's terms?
Yeah, I agree with 99.9% of what he said. There is a process to amend in ordinance, in this context. But the difference that we have, that .1% that we have as a difference, is that we do not believe it was ever approved as he believes it was approved. So there's no amendment that's necessary. I would argue that if we wanted to make it state what Derek and his client wants it to state, and what the actual document states, at that point, we would need to go back through the process, because we actually are amending the direction that was given to us by Council, and the approval that was given to this development by Council. So, that process would be relevant if you're interested in changing that rear setback. Because we're only changing what was essentially a drafting error, that's not necessary. That's a different kind of thing that's happening.
Well, I, I, just for the record, want to say, my client doesn't take the position of what it should be. My client was issued six building permits by the city, based on this ordinance. And then when a builder got the permit, and then the builder went to go build. And he spent a bunch of money. And now, if the ordinance had said 20, one, the six building permits would not have been issued, and two, the plans would have been drawn differently. And we're really talking about five of the six building permits, because one of the properties is well within the 20 feet. But the City of San Angelo issued stop work orders on the other remaining five, on permits that they already approved, based on something that's not of record. Whatever the intention of anybody was, that's way before my time. I'm looking at it as, the building permits were issued, builder started work, and now the builder can't work on five of the six because of a Scrivener's error. Well, even if it is a Scrivener's error, there's no vehicle that I can find in the code to correct a Scrivener's error on a planned development district ordinance. That's the point I'm trying to make. I don't want to get bogged, I know there's a lot of noise around this issue, but I want to narrowly focus it on, my client was issued six building permits, he started building, and now, no building. So, if it's gonna be fixed, fix it the right way.
So, after it was approved, or discussed in council and approved, it then went to our planning department, or permits department, and they issued permits based off of the signed documents?
Correct.
And those signed documents indicated that he could do what he's doing. Now, the question mark is, what was the timeframe, and who finally caught it? Where, where did all of a sudden the red flag come from? Because he got the permits, we issued them, the city issued them, he went and started working, and when did the red flag come up?
I, I can't answer that question.
Well, I'd like to clarify one thing that Derek said, that there was an intention here. There wasn't just an intent to do something, you guys actually took a vote to change that, make those rules in a certain way. Never presented the way they want us to interpret it today. So it wasn't just y'all thought, well, this would be nice, and this is how we're gonna do it. You voted and directed us to do something. Did we fail in that direction by putting the wrong number for a rear setback in a document? Absolutely. There's nobody here arguing that. We didn't. And that there was, when we hand it to our staff, we don't expect them to go back and watch a meeting and make sure all that stuff is accurate. Things certainly slipped through the cracks, but it wasn't just an intention. You guys actually took action here. The second thing is that there's other ways for this to be resolved that have not been pursued. I know that they've been offered to do a variance on this PD, which is still an option for them. I mean, right now, variances seem to be granted based on errors of staff pretty frequently, so I don't know how that would go. Definitely, it's definitely a board decision, but I don't think it's unfavorable to them. They certainly have some valid arguments to be made there. That is also an appropriate way to correct this error. But to state that it was just an intention is really misrepresenting what actually occurred in this room regarding that PDD.
So, what Council could direct today is for this to go back to the planning, I mean, the Planning Commission, and ask for a variance to allow the project to continue as it is. Is that correct?
Well, we, we had a meeting with city staff last week, and we did submit variance request last week. The only, I had some heartburn with the variance request because of something that's set in the code, and that is Section 207. Under the zoning board of adjustments, there is a subsection E that says, "The ZBA shall not grant a variance that would create some of the following effects. Number eight, the variance will modify any condition imposed by the Planning Commission or City Council as part of a conditional use, special use, or planned development district."
It basically says we can't do that.
I was leery, because if, if, if it, if it's the will of the City Council to change the ordinance as it exists today, that ordinance, in my opinion, is valid today. So therefore, us applying for a variance, that's something the zoning board of adjustments shall not do, it's kind of a snake eating the snake infinity type situation.
So, discuss, talk about that, Teresa.
That's what my concern was, but we have submitted the variance application.
Yes, okay, good. I'll let John talk about portions of that, and then I'll talk about the snake eating the snake, because that goes both ways.
The snake eating the snake.
There's two snakes eating the other snake here.
So, if you start from the premise that is our premise, that you never adopted an ordinance that changed the rear setback, that means that the rear setback is the standard setback that applies in RS1 zoning, because the PD didn't change it. Therefore, it's not a condition of the PD, and so the, the provision that he referenced that said you, the zoning board can't amend, or can't vary a specific condition in the PD, that rear setback is not a specific condition in that PD. If it had been, then yes, he's correct, but we don't believe that that rear setback was changed by your vote, and therefore, it's just the general provision that is variable by the zoning board of adjustment.
And again, I just got a message from Brandon, who said that the three conditions that can't be varied are those that the Planning Commission imposed. And so, we can't go back and change the ones that they've already changed, but the other one would be a valid one. He said John got it, though, so.
Okay, so what we're saying is that, in essence, what was approved was approved, regardless what was signed?
Yes, absolutely. Not only do we say that, but the Texas Supreme Court has said that in some opinions that they've issued, saying that staff, because of an error, either deliberate or, you know, not deliberate, cannot change the will of council. And the will of council here was to not address that back setback, that rear setback. Which is kind of the snake eating the snake part, from our perspective. If we had to go back and restart the process every time that there's a mistake in the writing of a document, that is not good precedent, either here or anywhere in the state of Texas.
It's not good precedent as a city either.
No, right.
Because it's not good to have signed documents, or documents presented, that are not reflective of the vote.
Well, absolutely, it's not. But that's the whole purpose of Scrivener's ordinances, or Scrivener's provisions in charters. And I find it interesting, I mean, just because I'm kind of nerdy about stuff like this, but the case, the Supreme Court case actually was cited, a San Angelo case from like the 20s, 30s, or 40s, where the mistake was made back then. So, these kind of mistakes, although they're unfortunate, we try not to make them, they are not uncommon in government, period. Or in business, for that matter. So they're just not, it's not as uncommon as we would hope that it would be.
The 10-foot setback is in line with what Bentwood Country Club likes or doesn't like, and what the adjacent properties like or don't like?
Partly to answer that, but to go back to your previous question, why it came up was the, the neighbors to the rear of these homes, they saw the builder out there, and it looked, they were like, hey, wait a minute, isn't he building too close to the property line? So that's what started the ball rolling on, on all of this. I'll maybe defer to them to answer some of those questions. There is an issue between them and Bentwood and deed restrictions, but that's not the city's role to be involved in. So, there may be issues with that, but, again, that's, that's outside of our, our realm. But I think, according to, when we met with them, they believe that the neighbors are all on the same page now. I've not heard that personally, but, but that's my understanding.
We have questions from Council? So, what we're saying today is that if we approve this item F, that we're asking the developer to tear out the work that's been done on five lots?
Assuming he does not get the variance he's requested, yes. But he is in the process to ask for a variance from the zoning board of adjustment.
Decided that he can ask for a variance based off of what Teresa said, so why are we even discussing it today if he's going to apply for a variance? I don't understand it even being on the agenda, or us discussing it for a vote today, if it's gonna go back to the zoning board. Why is it here?
I think the issue is to correct the ordinance, because, as you mentioned, there is a signed document. And if somebody five years from now looks back at this property, says, oh, there's a 10-foot rear setback, that's what will be the official signed document. So this item is to correct that for the record, so that the official signed document reflects what you all actually approved.
That's great, going forward. So we're gonna say, we're now adding this to the ordinance, basically, that says we can do this. But he still has the option to go back to the zoning board and ask for a variance on these specific properties, and then he'll come back to the City Council for another vote? Or not?
No, no, this, this item simply corrects the ordinance that you adopted.
That's all it does?
Yep.
It doesn't say anything about whether he was right or wrong, or were right or wrong. It just corrects the error.
Yes, it corrects one number.
So, he still has the right to go to the zoning board and ask for a variance, and if they give it to him, then does it come back to us for another vote, or they just give him the variance and he can move on?
Correct.
One way or the other.
If they grant the variance, it's all done, resolved, he can build as he's already started building.
So just to be clear, Council, all we're voting on is changing the ordinance to include this language. We're not voting on whether he was right or wrong, or were right or wrong. We're just correcting the verbiage in the ordinance.
Right, you're correcting the record, which is really important for him going forward. If somebody in this position 20 years from now comes and looks at this variance, and it's based on an ordinance that seems to reflect what he got varied, it doesn't make sense. So, and that happens. So to avoid that for the future, it is important that all the documents are in line with what was actually approved.
Larry, you wanted to make a comment?
Well, I agree that the ordinance has to be changed, and there's this promise that he can go for a variance. Well, I could go yes or no. And there he is stuck, if it's a no. That concerns me, because he's obviously made an investment on this. And he has, he doesn't have a promise for us, from us, that the variance will pass. I think that's problematic.
Well, but it's the process, and we don't get a vote on the process. It is the process. So, he can make a decision whether he wants to stop construction, and his workforce will have to work on something else as it moves through that process. But that's the process, and it's bad enough that we have, in fact, made a clerical error, which has created red flags. So we need to allow the process to go forward. And that board can decide yes or no, whether the Scrivener's, now in effect, would be in effect, overrides or impacts that zoning issue.
And there are other lots in this development that this would also affect as they're developing out. So it makes it, the whole, it's not just this particular issue. We want to correct it, so going forward, he doesn't have this concern.
Yeah, we're correcting an ordinance. He has the right to go.
We're correcting the verbiage in an ordinance, yes.
We're correcting the verbiage in the ordinance, but he has the right to go back through the process. The process allows that. So, we're not voting on whether we like the process or not. It is the process. Unless we change an ordinance that doesn't allow that process, it is the process. Clear?
Is there an imperative that we have to change this ordinance right now? Is there something that's gonna happen in, in the relatively near future that we should be aware of and, and vote in favor of this?
Well, again, I'd like to point out that whether you change, tell us to change the error on that drafted ordinance or not, your direction remains the same before. If you want to go and say, oh no, we're just gonna, because we feel bad for this guy, we're gonna go and we're gonna change that rear setback, that's when you need to go back through the whole process. You need to go back to the Planning Commission and get them to change that, and then come here, and then you guys approve changing it. We are not changing any of that. We are merely correcting an error in the writing. So...
Now, if you direct them to bring back that for further vote or conversation, you can do that. But right now, all we're doing is changing the verbiage. So if this happens in the future, we don't, the developer doesn't get stuck with an issue, the will of the Council is valid, even if paperwork is incorrect, which sounds not good. I mean, that does not sound good. But that's what we're being asked to do today. If I'm not mistaken.
Well, and also, I mean, I don't, I think it was kind of lightly stated here, but there are two processes they need to take care of. The first is with us, but I think they still have an issue with Bentwood unless that has been resolved. So, the fact that he has already poured on that project, he didn't get approval from the second party in this, Bentwood, before doing that either. So, yes, this affects him, but my understanding is, he was supposed to get that approval, and made sure they were okay with that setback as well. So, that's another hurdle they're gonna have to jump.
But it's not our hurdle.
It's not our hurdle.
Because that's Bentwood's hurdle. So we, we, we don't have authority to change Bentwood's authority, basically. So, again, we're voting on including in our ordinance this language that allows for correction of a Scrivener's error, period. It sounds not good to me that we are saying it's okay if somebody makes a mistake in the paperwork, because don't we always follow the paperwork or the money, one or the other?
Teresa's saying, Mayor, is, of course, this was voted on by the City Council, and what was understood and was voted on is not what was put on paper, which was the error itself. And quite frankly, I sit here listening to this, and I do feel like we, sincere apology for, for what happened with this error. This is not something we take lightly. We strive to make sure that we do everything we can correctly, without error. There's humans involved, and sometimes that does happen. So this is why we're coming back on, with this part of it, because we do know, we do understand what the Council had voted on. It was just an error on staff. And again, for that, we're sincerely, we sincerely apologize for that, but we still feel that that needs to be corrected, Mayor.
So all we're doing today, I repeat, is adding to the ordinance a Scrivener's error. We can deal with other issues that pertain to things like this?
No, we're not adding anything to the ordinance.
Not adding anything.
Changing.
You're just passing a resolution directing us to correct the ordinance that was already approved.
That's what I'm just saying.
This particular ordinance.
This particular one, right.
So...
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion?
I'll say it.
And there's a second. Is there public comment?
Just to correct a few things on the record, me coming to City Council today is to discuss issues with City Council, and nothing more and nothing less. The actual text of this ordinance was included in all of your package... The actual text of this ordinance was included in all of your packages in April and in May. It's still there online. I just want to make it clear that it was not something that you passed then the document was drafted. The actual, physical copy of the ordinance was included in all of your packages in April and in May, and wasn't noticed then. Thank you.
Oh, but the 10-foot setback wasn't in our paperwork initially presented. It was only in signing off on the document, or is that incorrect, what I'm saying?
It was in the background information in your packet, but it was not presented as an issue to be changed during the meeting. So as John, I mean, we have ordinances in the packet every time there's an ordinance, but John presents what the actual changes are, and that's what you're voting on.
Thank you. Harry's in charge.
Good call.
So sorry. So we are now ready for a vote, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the resolution passes, seven zero. With that, we will move on to our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start today with a presentation of the Downtown San Angelo Inc. by Annual Report, and I believe Monica Ramos is presenting with the backup support of Dell Velazquez.
I may not need Dell's backup today, we'll see. Good morning, council.
It's just nice to know he's in the audience backing you up.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Always by my side. So let's see, let's get started here. Maybe I do need him.
Presentation pending?
Yes, the presentation is loading right now.
This might be where you needed Dell, or this word.
I know, I spoke too soon.
Dell can act out the PowerPoints, how about that?
She raids for us, Dell.
There we go.
There we go. Alrighty, so I'll start with our reporting. This is our reinvestment numbers that come from our reinvestment dollars from new constructions from public-private properties. As of June 30th, we're at $3,212,141. These numbers are collected from data from our city departments, as well as the Tom Green County Appraisal District for any new property sales. Our overall total is shown here of the $284,706,733. This is really great for downtown that we have the new constructions that continue. Our mixed beverage and sales report, this shows a combination of the two, and the mixed beverage report being any entity that sells, prepares, or serves alcoholic beverages. And on the sales end, this only shows the city's portion of the 1%. The other portions for the state, county, and ED are not shown on this chart here, but they are a combination. And so what we can look at is a difference between the prior year's first quarter to now, and we see an increase across the board with 12% increase for San Angelo overall, 6% for the Central Business District, and 6% for Main Street. If we look at a comparison of the second quarter, the Central Business District and Main Street slightly decreased a bit, however, overall, San Angelo has an increase. So those numbers look good there, and so the trend shows positive for us. On our tiers projects for the year, the south total is $335,963. We have two projects that were recently approved, the first being the Valley Vending location. Valley Vending specializes in the sale and repair of vending machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, and their request was for facade improvements. As we see here, that was very much needed, and so they'll be putting in some new doors and windows and updating the plaster there. The second property is Angry Cactus Restaurant. There are also requests for facade improvements. They'll be expanding their dining area, improving the kitchen, and adding new windows to this property here as well. I will make a note, public announcement, for those in the south that are looking to apply for tiers funding. The new cycle does open on October 1st, and all completed applications must be submitted by November 30th, and so the funds will be replenished at this point. I added this boutique hotel to the presentation as a note of progress. Dell and I visited recently with the property owner Kyle Christian, Christensen, and you can really see the before and after of the progress that's taking place here. There will be 40 rooms with two suites, ADA accessible rooms, a gym, a check-in area conveniently located next to the bar and the pool area, so that was very clever. We're really looking forward to the completion of this project because it is on a very high traffic thoroughfare area, and I believe that this will be fabulous once it's all said and done. As for new business in downtown, we have a total of six since the last time I was here in April. We have Wear It Well, a retail store, and screen printing, Texas Filament Supply, Jacob Martin Firm, The Golden Hour, Lux 76, and Good Movement Gravity Pilates. So this adds to what I had previously presented for a total of 15 new businesses thus far. So that's really looking great. With all of these new businesses, it's not to say that there's not any closures. We do have two businesses that are closing their, or have closed their doors, and that's The Grind Coffee Shop and Bricks Winery. And then we do have Pure Boutique that was located on Concho. They're still open, however, they've relocated out of our Central Business District to North Chadburn.
Didn't Bricks sell to someone who's opening up a new business?
Yes, so luckily that location, thankfully that location, even though one business's door's closed, another will be opening, and that will be a yoga studio or spa is what we're expecting to see there. So there's another business coming in to replace the missing business. As far as our marketing and promotions, the Sheep Spectacular continues to just skyrocket through the roof for us, which is really great for San Angelo as far as helping out the artists, be able to display their artwork. People get to really experience what San Angelo's history stands behind, and we're really glad to see that there is now 151 total sheep sponsored, and this does include those that may not have made their debut just yet. We added those to the list, so that's quite a bit there. We do have sheep unveilings that we host with the sponsors, and tomorrow at October 20, on October 20th at 11:30 a.m.
October, September.
September, September 20th. I was jumping to the next unveiling. September 20th at 11:30 a.m. Sam's Club is unveiling their sheep, so the public is invited to come out and attend the ceremony, and then on October 24th at 2:00 p.m., Central Texas Farm Credit will be unveiling their sheep. Our downtown stroll is coming up on October 26th. This is on a Thursday between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. This is one of the largest Halloween events in San Angelo. The streets are filled with families trick-or-treating and visiting businesses. I know that the YMCA and some of the local churches participate on this day with trunk retreats, so if you're out in downtown on that day, please be cautious of pedestrians and join in on the celebrations, because there will also be fall festival-style games on this evening. Our historic downtown magazine is set to be distributed at the end of October, and the highlight of the magazine is going to be the beautiful Concho River, so can't wait to see that. Media Advantage has done a really great job of working with the magazine, and the last distribution of the lady in blue was really great. In partnership with Old Central Firehouse, Downtown San Angelo hosted a Mother's Day Mosey event. I really think that this was something that was well-appreciated by all the mothers. We had 12 locations that participated, and we made it fun by adding a bingo card for the guests. And as you can see here at Froyo Suites Downtown, Wandering Mind Brewery, and Bricks Winery, the event was very, very well-attended. And our Star Spangled Banner Concert and Fireworks, as you all know, the fireworks were a very wonderful display. We'd again like to thank our sponsor AEP and the City of San Angelo, and as well as any of our partnerships and volunteers that we've had with ASU, San Angelo Live, and U-Turn for Christ for helping us make this event possible. A little more of marketing and promotions continued. This is important to us because our goal is to try to help bring people to downtown and really impact their experience in downtown. So as far as ASU goes, we do get an intern from the School of Business and from the Arts Department, and we also work with the class as well. So we helped coordinate to bring students to downtown to take photography of different scenery in downtown. They really enjoyed coming out and exploring. We continue to be a part of leaderships in Angelo's tours. We hosted ASU Rambunctious Week not too long ago, and the students were able to come out and explore the dining, shopping, entertainment, and art of downtown. This Friday, Dell and I will be hosting a historic properties tour for the State Board of Review, and also coming up is the In Plain Air Visual Arts Tour that we will be assisting with as well.
When is the In Plain Air?
That one will be on October 27th.
Outdoor painting.
Right, I know, I was just curious, when?
Starts last week, the last, it starts on the last week of October. The artists arrive on Sunday and start painting on Monday.
Yes.
We always enjoy that, so yeah, thank you.
Yes, and then this tour on the 27th. And so we'll continue as an organization to do what we can to help boost revitalization in downtown. Vice President Michael Looney of the Chamber of Commerce stated that Rosenberg GMHB did state that the reason that they decided to move to San Angelo was because of the vibrancy of downtown, and I'll also quote Michael here where he says downtown played a role in helping recruit them as downtown is the heart and soul of the community, which they value. And that's very true, it is.
Did you include in your statistics the sale of the Middle Sister Building?
No, ma'am, that one was not included on there. We'll have that for our next quarter.
That was in January, right?
Yes. Any other questions?
Questions for Monica?
Yes, Tom.
Of all those businesses that we see come in and start, how many of those are, say, do they buy the property or they renters? Are they property, do they purchase the buildings, or are they mainly renters?
I think it's more of renters that we have. Sometimes it's just a toss-up, it depends on the climate, but more so renters that come in for the businesses.
Well, and the reason I ask that, as renters, it's easier for them to move in and try and to do these things. When you go to purchasing brick and mortar, it gets a little complicated. I'm very pleased the fact of how y'all work with people that are, I want to try something, I want to get out and get outside the envelope a little bit with their personal lives, and they've done that. I just, I appreciate y'all doing it with this group, I really do.
Yeah, and we do our best to work with anybody that comes into our office that's looking for space. We kind of guide them and direct them to what's available. We're kind of the liaison that says, here's the realtor that you can get in contact with, here's the property owner that you can speak to. So we do what we can to really help anyone that has any questions for us. We'll do what we can.
Questions, either further comments for Monica? All right, thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Mayor.
John.
I am thinking that what we should do is items B, C, D, and E, hold off on those a minute and do some of these other items, and then come back to the actual financial items, because there's people in the audience for some of these other items. So we're going to hold off on you, Tina. We're going to move forward on the agenda, and I'll call. All right, so we will do the item F, consider approving Sourcewell Contract Number 091422-WCP for the purchase of a concrete placement boom from White Cap in the amount of $119,980, utilizing stormwater fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Ryan, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As was just read, and as you permit, I'll be somewhat brief. This is a request to purchase this item, a concrete placement boom for the use in the Stormwater Department, to be utilized in conjunction with other equipment that's already in place, and we're asking for that purchase from the Sourcewell Cooperative contract. The funding for this purchase will be out of Stormwater's fund balance, thus the reason on the regular agenda.
Questions in terms of, the first question, people want to know what a concrete boom is. So describe a concrete boom, and then we'll take a vote.
Very good. You might have seen in some larger concrete projects where there's a large truck with a big boom that's helping those workers put concrete in specific places. This is not to that magnitude, but it's the same effect. So this unit is designed to travel over more sensitive spaces, so through parks or irrigation to get down to projects that might be along the river or other similar areas. That way, we're keeping the concrete trucks off of our turf or our sensitive areas, and it allows us to put that concrete exactly where we need it to go. So for example, the difference is coming out of the back of a concrete truck, that concrete goes where the concrete goes. A placement boom allows us to put the concrete within a retaining wall, for example, or in very small tight places, allows the flexibility of that concrete being moved with a machine instead of physically, so I know our workers are going to be more effective in that measure as well.
The questions for Ryan on this item. May I have a motion for approval?
Move.
A motion by Harry, a second by Lucy. Any public comment on these items? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No nays, so the motion passes, seven zero. Item G is first reading in public hearing of an ordinance deleting the juvenile curfew from Chapter 8, Article 8.07, Division 2 of the Code of Ordinances. And Teresa, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. This is basically a cleanup ordinance. House Bill 1819 was approved by the Texas Legislature, which basically said we can no longer have a juvenile the Texas Legislature, which basically said we can no longer have a juvenile curfew. So since we have one on the books to avoid confusion and to make sure our ordinances remain as current as possible, this deletes that provision.
Questions for Teresa?
Make a comment?
Yes. Yes, go ahead, Harry.
I'm not enthused about this change in state law. I think that curfew curbed a lot of juvenile crime and young people getting in trouble. I would encourage citizens, if you feel the same way, to contact Mr. Arby and anybody else that you know in the State Senate or Legislature. I think this change is not appropriate and I really believe this will be detrimental to this particular community.
Thank you, Harry. Do we have numbers that talk about prior to this going into effect, what juvenile issues existed versus now? Do we see, do we have any statistics on that?
I don't have any statistics on that, but I did want to see what effect this would have on our code of, our ordinances and our citations that we write. And we average right around 50 citations a year for juvenile violations like this. I would assume most of those are in the summer. Seems like that's when this is really utilized. But one thing about this ordinance, whenever it was put in place, and I think it was actually a requirement of the statute itself, is that it has to be reauthorized. And so every couple of years, and we just reauthorized it a couple of years ago, PD does go and look and see what kind of juvenile issues we're having to see if this is still an effective way to deal with it. And it always has been reauthorized. So I'm assuming that they still saw value in it.
Well, the curfew changes, but misbehavior can still be cited. So even though you can't specifically do it because it's a juvenile, it's not a juvenile, I mean, it's a juvenile curfew, but if they're graffitiing, it still can be ticketed. So let's just say the fine. It doesn't change the illegal activity and citations for that.
Correct.
Yes, go ahead, Lucy.
Teresa, do you mind change, know why they went and changed this ordinance?
It's about discrimination.
I don't know why they did a lot of things they did at the legislature this last year. I know that there is, it feels like in the last few sessions, there's been a slow and not-so-slow willingness by our Texas Legislature to remove different authorities from local government. I mean, the Death Star Bill is an example of that, which, you know, a court has put on hold, but that could be coming back as well. So I have no background. When I was going through this with PD, they were, they were not sure why they had done it either.
Information that I read was very specific about they felt like it was discrimination of an age group. Right or wrong, I think that's what I read. So.
So pop quiz, what are we calling a juvenile? What age? What do we separate this at?
18.
So 17 and under?
Yeah, if you're less than 18 years old. And it had, I mean, the, the way it's written is there's exceptions for work and for after-school activities and those sorts of things as well, but it is 18 years old.
Okay. So it's 17 and under.
Seventeen years and 12 months and 30 days.
Absolutely.
Just to be specific, about that age. Yes, sir, Tommy.
Anecdotally, I was on the council when we passed this ordinance back in the mid-'90s. Only anecdotally, but it did have a noticeable effect on juvenile, more than misbehavior, but it was a, the, the law enforcement folks were very appreciative of the help that it gave them at that point. I too, Harry, am dismayed that we are unable to keep this and also to Teresa's point, we have, this had to be reauthorized every so often and it was always reauthorized. It was just another tool for law enforcement to have, to curb activity that shouldn't be happening. So I too am saddened by that. I would, Mayor, even having said that, I would make a motion to approve item G as presented.
I think we already made a motion, didn't we?
Yes.
And we had a second, so now it was open for public comment, if I'm not mistaken. If my memory serves me correct. So, public comment?
We didn't have a second.
I think Harry wants a second.
Yeah, Harry did.
With that public comment, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item H, consider ratifying a COSA DC resolution authorizing a project under Chapter 501 and 505 of the Texas Local Government Code to utilize sales and use tax funds in an amount not to exceed $2 million to partially fund construction of a flight training facility by Angel State University, subject to City Council approval and authorizing the Board President to negotiate and execute all necessary documents. Michael?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Dane, Interim Economic Development Director, bringing to you a proposal to enter a, to participate in a project with ASU for flight training. They would like to construct a facility, a classroom facility at Mathis Field to do this work.
Go back to that slide and show us where on that slide this facility would be. That U is kind of sloppy down there, so it's a little hard to understand exactly where it was.
It's a lazy U. It's the lazy U classroom. All right. That is immediately adjacent to the new Skyline location, which they have started construction on. Wrong direction. They propose a classroom facility, which will be approximately 15,000 square feet. Fall's 20, fall 2023 enrollment, 140 students. They anticipate 250,000. Jeremy has steadfastly-
250, not 1,000.
All right, 250. All right, Dr. Topliff.
Going to cram him in if that's the number.
Get nervous about the expectations.
You just had two members of the audience pass out.
I'm already thinking about the numbers. The financials. Jeremy has steadfastly said this is going to grow larger and faster than anybody anticipates. He has, he has told us that there's, from day one, that there's tremendous demand and he's been right. And ASU has beat all of their estimates all the way through for growth. Bachelor's of Commercial Aviation. They do plan on placing a simulator, or I know in the past they've talked about more than one simulator. Skyline Aviation is the partner who brings the expertise, the actual flight training expertise, to, to the program. And this is critical as we go through and we measure or attempt to measure the projected economic impact. Skyline currently has 18 aircraft plus seven on order. With these current estimates, they, we will need, or they will need approximately 36 aircraft to handle the anticipated demand. One aircraft per seven students. Again, at the 250 student level, 42, approximately 42 flight instructors, these will be students which move through the program, achieve completion of the program and will be eligible to move into flight trainer status. We've, we've put those students, those instructors into the software at $40,000 each for the jobs that are created. My only concern there is that that sounds low and over the span of 10 years, I would expect that to grow. If the next 10 years is like the previous 10 years, that's likely to be half again as much. But we've got a flat projection in the, in the economic impact. Facility needs, they've already leased the footprint from the airport, 15,000 square-foot new building. The current estimate, they're still in design, current estimate is, is 7.4 million in change. When we initially started talking about this, they were talking about something in the $6 million range. And so they split the proposal three ways. $2 million from the EDA grant, $2 million from funding they had, and $2 million from COSA DC. They're hunting or have been hunting the additional money. They have not asked for additional money from COSA DC. The ROI says six to 11 years. If you consider only the city of San Angelo, it's an 11-year projected payback. That comes, remember that ASU's not a traditional tax-paying entity. So the, the benefits associated with come from the creation of those instructor jobs and the spin-off from that, the sales tax impact of having new jobs created, and the student enrollment. In other words, when you have 200-plus students that come to town and place demand on our services, real estate, groceries, whatever, whatever a student spends their money on or spends their parents' money on or the, that has an economic impact. So...
The other thing that I think is not listed here, I didn't see it listed here, is the benefit that this school will offer will be additional businesses that will probably look at our airport for expansion or creation of new things. For example, mechanical school, aviation mechanical schools. So this is a beginning step for what probably will be an enticement for other businesses to look at our airport for additional economic development opportunities.
Mayor, you're right. There was, there's no way to work that in. There are other benefits that Jeremy could talk to us about that have to do with-
Operations?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Operations?
Operations, that's right. Increased operations increases our profile with the FAA. Jeremy's here, he can talk about that kind of thing. Again, I started to talk about ROI. ROI, six to 11 years, that's a pretty big range. It's 11 years if you only consider the city's perspective. But keep in mind that as Skyline pays taxes, technically, Skyline is going to pay taxes on that aircraft. There are four-
When you say taxes, also are you talking about the fuel? Because we also benefit from an increased sale of fuel. Is that not correct?
You're, you're correct. Flowage fees, we, we receive a little piece of each gallon that's sold, the airport does, and that helps support airport operations, like you were talking about earlier. If you consider the impact of those property taxes played on, paid on all that aircraft, it has an impact to the school and the county as well. And that's where, that's why when Bob ran the analysis, if you look at all the, the, all three taxing entities locally, the ROI could be as short as six years. If you look at only the city, it, it would be closer to 11 years. The net benefit to the city, 1.8 million over 10 years. We're putting two in, net benefit to us at 1.8 over those 10 years. It's higher than that if you include the county, the impact of the county and the school district also. Again, because ASU's partner, Skyline, is a four-profit operation, they do pay property taxes.
Questions for Michael Dane?
While you're thinking about questions, we have people who know more than I do in the room. We have representatives from ASU and we have Jeremy here to talk about airport impact. ASU can talk about, more about the program.
Let's see where the questions go and see if we need additional support for the presentation. So, Tom?
So I'll go with the fact, we need Jeremy to go ahead and come up, but I, I think the key to this is what it-
Jeremy, come on up.
I think the key to this is what it provides to us in our leverage with the FAA. All right, I, I do have an issue with the fact of we're going, oh!
Would you do, try to stop a plane?
We, we will do anything to get your sympathy as we-
At what length she'll go.
Vacations are always costly, right?
Well, this is a, this is a contribution to something at which we get no direct repayment other than the economic benefit of additional students. The CFIs, we at ASU will pretty much raise our own CFIs and keep them in the program. But Jeremy, tell me, convince me how this helps us leverage our airport with the FAA.
You just wanted to see me hobble up here, didn't you?
Pretty much. I didn't know you were crippled, but anyway, if I'd have known, I'd ask sooner.
Jeremy Valgarts, I'm the San Angelo Airport Director. It's a good question. So what this does directly for us is, you know, the pilot problem is a big problem. I won't rehash that because I say it every time I'm in here. So obviously-
We need pilots, is what you're saying?
We need pilots. There's a huge pilot shortage. That's why we only have three flights a day instead of our six flights because there's aircraft to be flown, but nobody to fly them. So they're, they're helping fill that gap. They're going to provide a direct pipeline to, to fill that gap. The other benefit to us is the increased operations. Because we're down on airline operations, a lot of the small regionals are, are shifting their focus from airline operations to more general aviation, business aviation. And Mayor, you've been a proponent of that since I have been here, to promote the, excuse me, business aviation. So this will increase, based on the last assessment, over a two-year period, it'll increase operations, 38,000 operations over a year. That puts us over the 100,000 mark, which makes us a busy airport, which will help us compete for more discretionary money. When it comes to FAA discretionary, it's strictly based off how many operations and not how many employments. So these operations will really help, help us compete for more of that discretionary money. We're also talking with the FAA. It's very early conversations, but we're doing CIP meetings about adding an additional runway, which will help with two parallel runways. It'll help with the flow of traffic. That will also entice more business by having additional runway and it may open up the other side of the airfield for more development. So it's a really big view of what this program could offer, but just strictly the increase of operations really gets the FAA's mind turning and it puts us higher on the map.
So who manages this building? Does ASU management or does Skyline run it?
It will be ASU. It's just a land lease with us. We lease them the land and then ASU would be the owner of the facility and they would maintain the facility.
One of the asks that I would have for this, and I support it, is that it be made available to you or people who come into the airport who might need a larger facility for meetings, et cetera. So I would hope that we could work together to ensure that your needs for our people who fly in and out, that if they need access to a room for some reason, that we would be able to accommodate that.
That would be a tremendous benefit and hopefully ASU can work with us on that, so.
So here's my last one. So Jeremy, 30 years, something changes, we do something different, we move to a different site facility. What happens to this building? Who owns it when it goes away in 30 years? Where does that revenue go? From the sale or what happens?
Since we own the land, since the city of San Angelo owns the land and it is a land lease, there's a versionary clause in the lease, or clause in the lease. So after the term of the lease, the building would be ownership of the city and then we could lease it to, back to ASU or to another individual. So if, if ASU wanted to turn the building over to us prior to the expiration of that lease, it would be ownership of the city of San Angelo.
Answers my questions. Thank you.
Other questions? Lucy?
Yes, I just am curious. Is this Bachelor of Commercial Aviation, is the degree the same as your normal four-year degrees? Does it take four years? Or, I was just wondering how long we'll have the students.
Would you mind repeating that question? I'm Don Topliff, Provost, Vice President for Academic Affairs.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to know if it would take the, it four years to obtain the Bachelor's Degree in Aviation?
Yes, it's a four-year program like, like all, all bachelor's programs. 120 semester credit hours. Obviously, a significant portion of those credit hours are, are based in flight training, but there are additional credit hours. They have to meet all of the, the same core requirements that all of our students meet with respect to communication, English, government, mathematics, all of those things.
Thank you very much.
As it relates to scholarships, can you talk through that? Because I know I've heard from several people, this program's not inexpensive. And of course, it wouldn't be. But these students do have access to car scholarships or other scholarships to help reduce the cost of this program.
It doesn't reduce the cost of the program, but it helps pay for it. And certainly, flight training is not an inexpensive thing. And in a four-year program, a student on top of their other tuition and fees, it's going to cost them in the neighborhood of $80,000 in addition. So obviously, scholarships are an important part of that. They are eligible. And I will make one other observation. And one of the things that all of the airlines have, have really made a pitch towards increasing the number of pilots that are people of color and females. And I'll point out to you that right now, between people of color and females in our program, we are approaching 40% of, of that. So, you know, it's not only, this has benefits beyond just the economic- So, you know, it's not only, this has benefits beyond just the economic part of what we're talking about, and we think that's very important for ASU.
Additional questions? Do I have a, is that the end of your presentation, Michael?
If you're about to vote approval for this, I will stop talking.
Stop while you're ahead sometimes, right?
Mayor, I'd make a motion, we approve his presentation.
Tommy has a motion, a second by Karen. With that, any further public comment? No one's coming forward, so we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. And I just want to remind everybody what I said, we need to make sure that should Jeremy need use of that facility to accommodate any of his clients, that we make it available. I want that on record, please. All right, we're going to take a break, and so it is 10:04. We'll be back at 10:18. At 10:23, if you'll please sit down, and we will start with the next item on the agenda, which is item I. And item I is consider approving tax increment reinvestment zone incentive funding for a private nonprofit projected at 1720 Martin Luther King.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This may look familiar, this is a second request for a slightly different project than what came to you before, but this is a funding request. It is a nonprofit organization, a church, requesting about $68,000. The total project is about $82,000 with their $13,000 match. The tiers board did recommend funding the full $68,771.89 that was requested. You can see the available north funding is a little over 1.4 million available. The summary of their work, and there'll be some additional slides with some photos, but facade improvements to the building itself, some lighting improvements, paving, the parking lot, and then some landscaping as well. These are just some pictures of the existing site. These are some drawings of some of the proposed changes. Basically, their site plan showing kind of a rendering of what the building would look like after the improvements, as well as the paving of the parking lot, and then this is where the landscaping would be. So, as you know, just to remind you, nonprofit organizations, this is the text from the incentive policy, nonprofit organizations may be eligible for tiers incentives. The council and the board must make a finding that there's a significant economic impact that will be created as a result of the project. And so, it does also require a three-fourth majority of all the members of both the tiers board, which their vote was unanimous, so they met that threshold. And then the city council also must be a three-fourth majority to approve the funding. Staff does recommend approval of the funding for this project, and then, as I mentioned, the tiers board recommended 7-0 to approve as well. And I know there are a lot of people here to speak, so I just wanted to briefly summarize that the economic improvement that the board saw and that the applicants are advocating is that even though improvements to this site won't generate any increased property values for the zone, that improvement of the site benefits the surrounding area. Dilapidated areas of town discourage businesses coming in, it discourages people coming through and shopping at businesses, and so even improving nonprofit buildings and sites will help spread that to the surrounding area, further encouraging redevelopment and investment in the area. Again, I think that's kind of the overview. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? May I have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Is there a second public comment?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is William McLendon, single member District 6. And we're back again to get approval for Guessy Missionary Baptist Church. We're seeking the approval for the funds to go, for the funds to go help outer appearance of our church and property. We feel that improving our outer appearance of the church will help to improve the look of the community. We understand that tiers stands for the tax increment reinvestment zone, and that although we do not pay taxes on the property, we are able to apply for the grant money because you, the city council, voted to allow nonprofits in the north zone to apply, because there was abundance of money. You said in the past that nonprofits does not put money back to the system, and that we shouldn't be allowed to receive any funds. Businesses that will be hired to carry out these projects, they pay taxes, so the money does go back. Also, the money for these projects would solely come from the tiers, would not come from the tiers, because we have to do a 10% money match. The council should look at the big picture and see that the revitalization is needed, and with your help, everyone comes out on top. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg Myers, 19, North Washington. For the last 23 or 24 years, I've been involved in all four of the neighborhoods that were designated as blighted back in the early part of this century. And two really incredible things have taken place. One has been in terms of the residential revitalization, which includes the Blackshear area and the northern tiers area. And the second one has been the revitalization of downtown. The revitalization of the neighborhoods has been exceptional, the best in the state of Texas in that area, and I've not seen a better downtown in any small city in Texas better than what you have here. But when you talk about the tiers part of this issue, I do not believe that the north side will ever redevelop as a business unless people begin to understand the difference between them and the downtown. There are two really radically different things happening. One is, when downtown started revitalization, it had a very, very solid area of not-for-profits and government and the hospital and all these kinds of things to generate traffic downtown, and also had buildings everywhere. A lot of them are vacant, a lot of them are rundown, but there was a place for businesses to come in and redevelop, and with the skill and the effort of the downtown organization in the city, and Costa DC, and the Chamber, and all of these, things happened. And you really did a great job. On the north side, there is not a large area of built-up business area. There's a lot of residential area, there's a lot of dilapidated buildings, and there's a lot of vacant areas up there as well. But what you have is a place that doesn't have the infrastructure or the exceptional business skills of the people around there to do the kinds of things that happen down here. And so, if there is to be a redevelopment up there, it's not going to be just because you redeveloped the businesses that are there. You could redevelop every business up there and still not have a base for redeveloping the whole area business-wise. And so, what you wind up with is, as you look at this not-for-profit situation, when you take the MLK drive itself, what you find is that from the freeway on up to where Walmart is on 29th Street, two-thirds of that, of all the public buildings that exist there, most of them are churches. So that if you're trying to redevelop the kinds of...
Greg, that was, I think, part of the previous person's statistic, so you can keep talking, because I don't think they reset it.
Thank you. But from that area, that almost 20-block area that constitutes it, almost all of the area that occupies space that's not residential is made up of churches. And they are the ones that attract the traffic that does come up there, and they're the ones that people see when they come through there. They do not pay taxes. But if you are to develop any businesses that do pay taxes, you cannot have those spots, those areas that are blighted areas and do not attract people, or at least do not repel people. So, it's an investment in the tax base to see that that much of the public business, I mean, non-business and non-residential area has something to offer. They will be developing a tax base if they improve, and with tiers, you find a way to market the area, the open area, to meet the needs of the developing residential area. So, I think that, you know, it's not apples and apples, it's apples and oranges. The situation downtown is quite different in terms of the nonprofits and their importance to the community. And so, I hope that this time you see an opportunity to improve an area, as the picture showed, that will make the next block over have somebody would like to come in and start a new business, because it'll be starting new businesses that make that develop, not just putting facades on the ones that are there. That's important, but there aren't that many businesses at all. So, thank you.
Were there public comment?
Good morning. My name is Minister Evelyn...
Could you talk a little more into the microphone, if you don't mind?
Okay. Good morning. I'm Minister Evelyn Smith, Guessy Missionary Baptist Church, SMD 5. And first of all, I want to take my hats off to you all for the job you guys have to do, and it's not always easy. So, I am here to try to get a little more understanding about the procedure of the tiers program, because from what I understand, the only reason the Guessy Missionary application was denied the last time was because we do not pay taxes. But we knew that when we put in the application. And when I first heard about the tiers program, I came up and asked, were there any funds for churches? And you said no, and you explained why, and I'm like, okay. But then, in August, you opened up the doors for churches and nonprofits, and especially churches to put in an application. So, we did. So, you knew we didn't pay taxes, so... But yet, I know nonprofit organization has been approved for tiers fund and from the city, as I watched it on TV. A nonprofit organization is also actually on the budget for that 2023 budget. And so, just to say, we are not a church. We're not just a church. We are a community action, which is a significant impact in our community. We feed over 250 to 300 people a day. We deliver food boxes during a COVID 200 to 500 people. We do back-to-school block parties and events, and we have, instead of Halloween, we have trunk or treat, which uses our parking lot, is on our project that need to be revitalized. We do vacation Bible school, we help people find employment, we inform businesses about the tiers program so they can put in the application. We work with the homeless shelter, and our pastor and wife has taken money out of their own pocket to help people. And we work with all other different churches at 3 o'clock services. People use our parking lot, the community come over and use our church and parking lot. We help people to be better citizens for themselves and for the city. We empower people. So, if nonprofit organizations and churches went out of business, the city would probably have a lot more to do, and that's another significant impact. We are not just trying to fix our church, we are trying to fix the community. Just because a business building uses tiers funds to beautify their business, that still doesn't mean people are going to come. If you don't have a nice-looking public area, you probably just heard that, people are not going to come. People are not going to stop. We got Subway and Church's Chicken, they're on Brian Thruay, but they don't do very well either, because the area doesn't look very nice. I've talked to them about that, the area doesn't look nice. And so, that's another significant impact. We want to attract people to our community. There have been hardly any businesses rebuilding over there, restaurants, and, you know, we just want more business over in our area. They won't come and build over there because of the way it looks. The tiers funds do not go to our church, it goes to the businesses that do the work. The tiers fund is reinvested back into the businesses that do the work.
Can you wrap up your comments? Are we making sure this is working correctly? Because before, it was set on a different number. So, if you could wrap that up, I would appreciate it.
Okay. We have met all the eligible requirements, and we believe an improvement for a nonprofit building would be an economic benefit and positive impact to the community and to the business. The improvement of the nonprofit building is economic and social investment into our designated area for the overall fiscal impact. We do more for the city and community than some of the other nonprofits that have had funds from the tiers program. So, if you deny us, I see that as a discrimination against a nonprofit church. So, we respectfully...
Please wrap it up.
This is my last comment. We respectfully ask that you consider about improving our application, since the city council opened the door for a nonprofit to apply. We respectfully ask that you approve, that we be able to work together. I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morning, Mayor, members of council. My name is John Mark Hoag, I live in Single Member District 5. I'm the Chair of the Tiers Board. And I just want to make a few brief comments from the board's perspective. I'm not speaking for everyone on the board necessarily, but when this project and the whole nonprofit issue first came up, I had a lot of the reservations that some of you may have. It's a church, and of course, I had issues. Being a good Baptist, I'm a separation of church and state kind of guy, so I had concerns about that. I had concerns about nonprofits, and how, and do we open the door? But as we began to go through the discussion, both with staff, with members of the public, and not just those who are here advocating for it, but people that were in the audience who had no interest in the project itself, came forward and gave comments and insight about this. And I think, I want to echo some of what Mr. Myers was saying. We began to see this as not just an issue about return on investment and about what the purpose of the tiers was. I was on the city council when the tiers was created, and at that time, the main idea of it was revitalization, particularly in this area of town. You know, Walmart was coming in, and we wanted to create the tiers fund, in part for downtown San Angelo to revitalize, but also talking about this north side and the several areas of town that council had identified as a need of improvement that had been blighted or economically depressed, however you want to state it. What we began to see, what I began to see, is that it's all one big picture. And what we're talking about is investment to try to make the north side of town more attractive, to be a place where people will want to invest in residential properties, invest in businesses, invest in the properties that are there, so that we can improve that entire corridor. And it's not just MLK, we're talking about Chadburn Street, we're talking about Bryant, the entire area of the city. We think, and I think, that is the main purpose, what tiers was created for and what the council should be considering in what it does with this request. I understand the concerns. We also, again, had the issue of, you know, one and a half million dollars sitting in there and no one applying for it. So, that's also another issue that we were trying to do with the northern area, was try to find ways to encourage individuals, businesses to request those, and in this case, we think it's a good project. I've been to the location, I've seen it myself. I think the entire area needs revitalization, and I think that is only going to help raise property values that do pay taxes in the residential areas, et cetera. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll also, go ahead. Go ahead.
How long have you been on the tiers board?
About four years. This is my second term, about four years.
So Evelyn made some comments that we had given tiers money to nonprofits. Is that accurate? Or maybe we confusing that's hot tax money?
Correct. It's hot tax money.
I want to hear you say that.
I don't recall. And we may have just recently done another one, but some have come before. But no, this is the first one.
All right.
I recall.
All right. So in your opinion, is it fair to allow a church on north, in the north tier zone, to apply and churches on the south zone not to apply?
No. And when that issue came up at the direction of council, we went back and looked at that a couple of meetings ago. And I believe what the tiers board recommended was to lift that and to make it available in both the north and the south. But I believe when it came to the council, the council denied that request and just decided to keep it in the north.
Correct. I want to make a point to talk about many of the comments that have been made. And that is that we brought, it was presented to the tiers board that we improved the Chadburn corridor all the way up to 44th Street, which I think is what the tiers board, tiers territory is. Because we believe that if we improve the corridor, that many people would benefit from that improvement. Chadburn has not been improved in the north corridor like MLK has. And yet, when presented to the tiers board for improvement of the Chadburn Street area, north of Houston Hart or the whole north tiers area, which I believe starts at 4th Street, it was voted down. And yet, that investment would have improved a huge corridor that would have improved many people's businesses, nonprofit and for-profit, and perhaps new businesses would have been created. But it was voted down because we do believe that the streetscape program in the south has helped businesses to the tune that we wanted to use these monies to improve the corridor for all people who have businesses, residents, or nonprofits on that corridor. It was voted no.
Excuse me, madam. And I'm not really here to get into a debate about disagreements.
I'm not either. I'm just making a comment.
Well, but that's the comment that you just raised. And so I will address that. To my knowledge, and I haven't been there forever, and I wasn't on the tiers board at the time, the original investments in streets in downtown, when those funds were appropriated through the tiers and through the city council. So I'm not aware of what vote you may be referring to.
One that was made just about two months ago.
If you're talking about the ones for maintenance investment, Maintenance Street.
I'm not.
Then I'm not aware of which vote you're talking about, Mayor.
Shane Kelton presented, yeah.
You know what we're talking about, John? What vote we're talking about? I don't recall.
And I'm not debating. I'm just telling you what happened. So it is on record. So it can be seen.
Well, you're sitting here attacking me for a vote of the tiers board.
No, I'm not.
No, you're getting back and trying to get back at the tiers board when we're here to really discuss another issue, which was this application, which was all I addressed. I don't know what vote you're talking about.
I think I wouldn't say it was denied. There was a proposal to improve North Chadburn, north of the Loop. And I think if my recollection was, it was tabled so that Shane and others could bring back more information about that project. And so I think there was some skepticism of using those funds. I think it's no secret that the board has been concerned that so much of the funds available were set aside for the Chadburn Street project. And they were hesitant to spend more on that while they're still paying off, you know, some of the other Chadburn project. But I don't think they actually denied it.
Well, Shane's in the room. We'll just, we'll get clarification on that when John Mark Hoag is through, talking.
I'm not really sure that issue is even on the agenda. But, and I'm sorry to.
I was going to say that we need to keep it on the 1720 Martin Luther King project. If we have questions that are related to that, then that's appropriate. Otherwise, we can schedule.
I'll be happy to talk about any of those other issues at any time. And I'm sorry I got up here now to distract from the Martin Luther King project. And I've stated what our position was and what our view was, that we're trying to work on the redevelopment of the entire community. And I'll be happy to discuss any other issues if you'd like to invite me back to have any issues about the tiers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? If you want to speak, if you're going to come up and speak, go ahead and sit on that front row, if you will, so you'll be easier to just come on up. Go ahead.
I'm Theodore Boone, and I'm standing to speak on behalf of the Martin Luther King corridor. We've heard about the past. We're dealing with the present. But there's also a future for the area. Since we first came here, activity on Martin Luther King Drive from the city has escalated. Work has been done on the streets, on the walkways, on the lighting, and it's making a difference. Events are taking place all up and down the street, not just at churches. This is not a church issue. We're making it a church issue. But the real issue is relationship. And our community is a mixture of all of the cultures in our city. There was a young man who died for what he believed that made a speech that said he had a dream. That dream is the street that we're talking about. Elevating it both relationally, economically, and for future, that will be meaningful and a statement, not only to San Angelo, but just the mention of their name, MLK corridor, can stimulate economic issues and realities. It can bring about a community that's connected, that are working together to improve not just economics, but quality of life. So I'm standing here and saying, this is not a church issue. This is a people issue. This is a community issue. And just as we can spend money in parks or spend money in other neighborhoods, I think we're being challenged for the moment. What are we going to do about the future of an area that has potential but has not had resources to fulfill those needs? Maybe we should be talking about something different than tiers. But tiers is an opportunity to show goodwill that we count. And when I say we count, I'm saying everybody count and should have opportunities for resources that's for the community.
Thank you very much. I'm confused about this timer because it doesn't seem like to me it's working correctly. So because I'm just sure it's not. First time it didn't. I know it didn't. So I just want to make sure.
The first gentleman that spoke got five minutes as the applicant. Everybody else making public comment is just getting three.
Okay, just to clarify that.
Double-checking and making sure that it is working.
I just want to make sure everybody gets their fair amount of time. And it seemed like we were shortening some of them. So I just want to make sure everybody has the fair amount of time to talk. That's all. I don't want them to feel like they got shorted. Okay. Further public comment?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Single-member District Three. My name is Michael Leepack. I'm here to talk about, I was here at the very first hearing for the tiers. And I'm here to talk about the community. There's a definite community interest in this area. There are five churches. All of those five churches contribute to the community in a greater capacity than other areas of the city. And I just want to talk about the community and the importance of the development that they are trying to accomplish. And my last comment is, is that please take this in careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good morning, council. I'm Sally Ayana, a single-member District Four. And I came to thank you all again for all what you do for our city. And also would like to encourage you to pass this particular project. I have been on several committees, especially working with Reverend Meyer when the West Texas Organizing Strategy began. It took care of all of the north. It targeted four areas in town, and the north was part of it. And also, the West Texas Organizing Strategy also included meetings with the tiers board. And at the time that the tiers was being organized, it also included Chadburn, Martin Luther King, and the Brian Thruway, all north. And I understand that what helped the north get the money is Walmart. It has been building up since then with several businesses, even since we spoke the last time for the tiers board. Some other businesses have been added. And if this project is accepted, when it's accepted, then it's not going to, you're not going to lose. The tiers is not going to lose any money because we have I-27 coming through. We have I-14 coming through in the north of town. And that money is going to put back into our city. It's not like it's going to be a loss. It's going to be added, even though personally, this church is going to add to it. But it's going to be added even more so. More funds, more money is going to be added into our community because of this. I am so much for our community. I even ran for office because I care. And I know you all care. So please care for that community like we do too. Thank you very much.
Further public comment? Was that?
Larry's got questions. I do too.
I wondered if the tiers board chairman could come up. I got a couple of questions that he may be able to answer. By the way, I think the folks that showed up here did a great job of presenting it as a community action network. I did have one problem with the request, and that dealt with signage. I realize that we're, in fact, dealing with a church, which is kind of awkward, as you'll probably admit, in terms of the city providing money there. But it seems to me that providing signage for the church goes beyond an expectation that we should do.
Well, I think the signage is all part of the appearance of the church. I mean, I haven't looked at that item in particular in any in-depth. Oh, okay.
Because I think the policy says it won't. Yeah. Yeah, I think, John, the policy says it won't pay for signage. So it might have been in the picture, but not in the numbers.
I think what they're telling me is that they're funding that out of their match. That's their 10%, part of their 10% match.
But I did notice in their request. So it was there.
Well, it's part of the project, but they'll be paying, you'll be paying for the signage out of the 10% match that they have to make the $13,000. They're paying for that. That's one of the things they're using as part of that. Is that correct, John?
Yeah. And the tiers policy does say it won't pay for signage, both north and south. So but when they present a site presentation, it would only make sense that the signage would be a part of that site presentation.
It's what we see when it's presented to the tiers board.
Thank you.
I've got a question before you. How much does the north tiers bring in annually? And I know this is a hard, and you can guesstimate this, John.
John? I don't know off the top of my head. I know that it's never been, I know that it's, the balance since the entire time I've been on the tiers has been well above a million dollars the entire time. And it's been close to two before.
I think it's important to where I'm going to go with this. If we knew how much it brought in annually. And have you got that number? But just hold with me a minute. How much the tiers brings in annually, the north zone revenue?
This year, the tiers is budgeted to bring in $776,000 in property tax revenue. Year-to-date, we brought in $795,000.
So y'all bear with me. We're just trying to talk out loud here. But I think I'll complete this where we get there. I don't think it's fair what we can do in one zone and not the other. I've had lots of people contact me about revitalizing Martin Luther King. And I drive Martin Luther King two to three times a day. So I'm with you on that. I don't think it's fair and ethical to do, award one church and not another, unless you do something in there, put some parameters in there so everybody can play. So if I look at this, and after we denied this the first time, I talked with Kimberly Holly, and she pulled up some nonprofits that are listed up and down Martin Luther King and listed up and down Chadburn. And I just driving with my limited knowledge on what the property ownership is, I found there were 10 just on Martin Luther King that were nonprofits. So once we approve the door to one, we don't discriminate and go across. So now we open it up to, you know, 10 to 12, maybe. Who knows? That can apply for this money. Then we take that and the revenue generated by them, while it, and going with the discussion made today, that's going to take place over time. That's not going to be something where those people start paying tax revenue back. So what scares me is there's going to be commercial property. And if you take away the funds that the commercial property people could have had, and you're giving it to all the nonprofits, they've got an argument not to revitalize it. I mean, I'm going to go in there and I will say, if I want my thing to move forward, and I've got a sprinkler or I've got to do something with this, and take an existing building, which there aren't very many, that are, somebody would want to improve that. So it's kind of a double-edged sword going through there. But I won't support the motion as it stands. But I would say if the motion came back and we limited the availability to nonprofits to 10 or 15% of the annual revenue the north zone has, then I would have no problem with that because you give them a set period or a set dollar amount that they can pursue. And it's up to your board to decide how that splits. If you gave them 10%, they're 70 grand. If you gave them 20%, 140. But I don't want to discriminate against the commercial business that would generate immediate revenue. These people and people that have contacted me, constituents have been, I don't want you to decide where my taxpayer dollar goes to a nonprofit. If I want to give to my church, I'll give to my church. I don't want you to decide where it's going. And I've got several of those phone calls. It's a double-edged sword. But what I'm saying is, if you're going to do something with nonprofits, you can't discriminate against those commercial revenues that are going to come. And if you placed a specific dollar amount on what was available to them, then they can decide. Because there are nonprofits there that stand a chance of making it the next 20, 30, 40 years, and there's buildings here that don't. I would hate to give 20, 30, $40,000 to a building, and in 15 years, it's gone. And I don't know if you would agree with that or not, but.
Well, I understand the concern. I mean, I think that's a concern that I had going into this. But I think as you begin to evaluate it, nonprofit does not mean no economic impact. There are many of nonprofits in this community that have significant economic impact in this community.
Like 700.
Yeah, exactly. One of the things that got brought up first was, okay, nonprofits. Well, what about churches? Well, we can't discriminate against a church that's a nonprofit versus, you know, Habitat for Humanity that's a nonprofit. So you would have to apply the same standards to each. I understand the concern. I also, but I disagree to the extent that. I also, but I, I disagree to the extent that what this whole project is, is not about, not necessarily about a business growing and, and, and beating tax revenue in. That is one of the, one of the things that can happen with it. But I believe it's more about revitalization of the area overall, over a long term. And I think what you're doing is raise, what you're wanting to do is raise the property values of the entire area. Because by, by raising the property values of the entire area, that's where the tax revenue issue comes in. But I, I, the situation that we have in the north tiers, and this is the problem we've had since the beginning, is no applicants. And, you know, I, I understand your concern if we had a flood of applicants, and the money was all, and tons of nonprofits were applying. Now, this is the first nonprofit that's really come to us and, and asked for that, so we don't have a track record of that. And so I don't think, under the circumstances at this present time, that that's something that we, that we can consider. What we have to consider as a tiers board is what the criteria is that's been adopted by the city council, and we evaluate on that criteria, and we make our recommendation. If at some point in the, I think there's a, there's a point there that you make, that at some point in the future, if all of a sudden you get lots of nonprofits coming in and applying, then you may have to revisit what you're, what you're doing. And if all of a sudden, we get lots of business development going on in the north tiers, then I think that's a different, that's a different story as well, so.
Well, I think this boils down to Martin Luther King Street. And I, and when you open the doors on it, if this one was to go through, I think you would see at least seven to 10 nonprofits file the next, they, they would be crazy if they didn't file the next turn, all right, to come in and ask for money. And so that, that scares me, and I don't think it's fair. I have a hard problem giving money to one side and not treating the other side equally.
I agree completely. I don't think it's limited to Martin Luther King. I mean, I hear your concern. Your concern is that now all the nonprofits on Martin Luther King are gonna come in and ask for, for tiers funding. I think that's, that's speculation at this point. And we can't really make our, we can't as a board, as a tiers board, make our decision based on speculation. It's the criteria that we've approved. If the criteria need to change, and if the city council wants to change the criteria, that's always your discretion.
I don't want to give it to them and take it away. I mean, while it is speculation, it's also, I would call it, you know, a little bit of anticipation of what is likely to come. And so I, I get the word choice of speculation, but I would think it would be hard for some of them not to press forward with this and go, okay, that is. So I, I think it's very obvious that you're gonna get, if you approve one, you're now gonna get 10. And it, while that is speculation at this point, I think that it's a pretty high probability they're gonna move forward.
Well, my, my argument back to that is, that may or may not be the case, but as a tiers board, what we're presented with is determining whether there's a significant economic impact on the community by this project. That's all we have to go on. There's no further definition of that or what we do. So we have to evaluate that based on what's presented. And based on what's presented, we think there is a, like, it's gonna be a significant economic impact for Martin Luther King in general.
That's where I was going with my, if you allotted a portion of the funds available that are each year, you would provide yourself protection against anything that could go either way. There's the number. That's what we have for nonprofits. That can be split up any way that your board deems relevant or a necessity.
I understand what you're saying, and all I'm saying is, that's a policy decision, which is not, which is not, was not in the purview of tiers, and is not in the purview, I guess, of this application right now. What we just have to do is consider it on, on its merits, but...
You know, one of the, Tina, again, we might ask that you come forward, because we made, made your effort to do town hall meetings and educate the public more about the tiers money, and particularly the northern tiers money. To that point, I believe in the past nine months, about $800,000 from for-profit businesses have applied for tiers money and received it. Can you give us that dollar amount?
Well, I would really probably have to defer to John for that. I can see what's been kind of encumbered in our financial statements, but he'd probably be more aware of what projects. That sounds like a high number to me.
Because I believe we started, and I'm not gonna tell you whether I know it's 23 or 22, over $2 million, and it's now down to 1.4 million. And those dollars were all spent on for-profit businesses. And that followed us doing town hall meetings and trying to educate the public on the use of these funds. And then we had individuals, I believe Shirley Spears happened to be one of them, who went out and knocked on some doors, I think, and Lucy did too, to make sure people were aware of the opportunity attached to tiers. And the response, based off of that, whether it was for that or whatever reasons, the amount of people submitting applications for tiers money really improved and, and changed. And I think, John, at the last meeting or the meeting before, I forget which one it was, maybe it been four meetings ago, you talked about how much that total number had been reduced from what we started off with. In the beginning, I think, a 23, but I could be wrong on that.
We've got almost 1.2 million.
Yeah, and I think, I think we were, I, I wanna say we were around 2.1 million, so we've had a significant response in terms of number of applicants. Obviously, there's still a lot of money out there, and even, even at the max, $75,000 per applicant, you know, we could still fund a lot of projects. And I think, I think Councilman Thompson's right. You know, we could look at bringing back a change to the incentive policy, but I think what the chairman was saying is, we still have to act on this one today, but if then your direction is for us to take that for consideration to the board, we could definitely look at that incentive policy for a future change to limit the amount that could go to nonprofits, for sure.
Yes, Lucy?
I wanted to say one thing real quick. Instead of going down the way Thompson said to go down, why, why isn't it that you couldn't just say that the business that are being taxed are the ones that are priority over the nonprofits?
You could prioritize it, but the tiers board would do that at their first vote.
I guess I'll just remind you that, that this came to you not too long ago. I think it was referenced earlier. One of the discussion points by the council was eliminating funding for nonprofits altogether, and you all chose to leave it in to allow funding for nonprofits. Now, again, it's a high bar, and you obviously don't have to approve any of them, or all of them, for sure, but you did leave in the option for these nonprofits to apply, and so that is in the current policy.
And that's what I'm talking about today, and did the last time that we brought this to, to us, is that as long as these nonprofits are meeting that criteria, I don't see how we can say deny it when they actually meet everything on there. Now, if we don't want to approve nonprofits, then let's just make that policy to whether or not included, that they cannot apply for this money, but don't deny them just because they're nonprofit, if they're eligible.
Were there comments?
Before I sit down, I'll make one more comment. I just wanted to clarify your comment, Mayor. The, the policy does allow for signage, but it has to be part of an overall improvement. You can't come and ask for just signage, but if it's part of an overall site improvement project, signage can be a piece of that. But, but you're right, that they have not asked for funding for signage.
And I didn't mean to get off track on my conversation earlier, but several people had made a point to talk about the improvement in the corridor, and that corridor conversation kept coming up. So it was introduced by public comment, the corridor being improved. That's all. Craig?
Craig Myers, 19 North Washington. Just in relationship to what was said, for 20 years, tiers roughly, has been in existence, and for 20 years, we've had the history of generating the money up there and not being able to spend it. And to say for speculation, what would happen if we actually started spending the money up there? I think that's a little bit premature. You can change anytime you want to, and you've changed policy from time to time. But up to this time, the practice has been to generate money and not use money, and if we find out that it's being used, and it's, you know, then you can change anytime you want to. But at this particular juncture, after 20 years of sort of denial of generating the policies and the programs and the publicity and all these kinds of things that have made it a problem, that you have too many applicants, I think to say that let's not think about not-for-profits. You've got it. You've had a chance to vote on it again. You voted on it. They're there. I'd wait a while before you change up something that you've got a 20-year history of not being a problem. Thank you.
All right, we have, Tom?
Well, I'll just go back to, for continuity's sake and the protection of this program, commercial businesses that pay taxes generate the revenue, all right? A, a lot of the discussion today has been about nonprofits and how it will make the neighborhood and revitalize and go there, but when it boils down to what it was really made, was those that put money in can get money out, and those that are getting money out are gonna put money back in. I, I certainly understand it. I, I think if you're gonna, like I said, I will not support the motion in the, that's on the floor, but if somebody wants to bring something back in the future, I have no problem saying this is a, an allocation of funds for nonprofits that they can decide is available for nonprofits, and let the board decide that. But I think for the protection of the program...
That's not what's out there today.
Right. It's not what's out there today, but for the protection of the program, I'm not gonna support the motion that's on the floor.
There's a motion that's said that we've ended public comments, so at this point in time, we will take a vote. Tom? E? Tommy, your vote?
Aye.
Tom?
Nay.
Harry?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mayor? Nay. So how many did?
I had the two.
It doesn't pass.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Item J, First Reading a Public Hearing on an Ordinance to Rezone From Single Family Residential to Two-Family Residential Property Located at 2718 Forest Park Avenue. John, you're on.
Yes, as you said, this is a rezoning, a request from RS1 to RS2, basically from single family to allow for two-family or duplex. You can see the property there in red. I'll point out while it's on this slide, while it is largely a single-family neighborhood, there's RS3 zoning just to the north, neighborhood commercial just there to the west, and so we believe that this does make sense for this particular neighborhood. This is a proposed replat, so they're basically gonna take that one fairly larger lot and split it into two. This is a picture of the site, that existing mobile home that's currently on the lot will be removed to, to be replaced by the duplex. As I mentioned, staff does recommend the rezoning. The Planning Commission heard this at their August meeting, and also recommended approval I don't think we have the slide for the in favor and opposition, but I don't believe there was any opposition to this one.
Tom, you wanna make comments?
This will improve what's there, and I haven't heard any objections from any of my constituents. So I will make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a second. Second by Larry. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Move on to Item K, First Reading a Public Hearing of an Ordinance Amending the Future Land Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan for Commercial to Neighborhood Center and Rezoning From Lot Manufacturing to the Zero-Lot Line Twin Home and Town Home Residence, Residence District for Property Located at 3480 Edgewood.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is, and for some reason, the boundary's not showing up, but it's, it's this property here, those existing three lots. You can see there's the city fire station right across the street, and this property backs up to Goodfellow Air Force Base, which is all of this area.
And there's a big fence there, right? Or a chain link fence there?
Yes, yeah. The, yeah, fence for the base. And, and of course, this is kind of the beginning of the neighborhood, and you'll see there's, there's one or two in opposition that spoke, and those are from that neighborhood with concerns about density of, of developing at that location. This is the proposed plat, so you can see there are 15 lots. I want to clarify, because we got some questions from folks, because they're, they're thinking of this as duplexes, but it, they're actually what we call twin homes. It's a duplex that straddles a lot line, so each side of the duplex is on its own lot. So this would actually only be 15 total units. I think some people were thinking that it was maybe a duplex on each, making it 30 total units, but in fact, it's just the 15 units. So basically, you would have one duplex across each property line, and I think, obviously, there's an, an odd number, so I think this larger lot here might be just a, a single-family home on that one. You can see the notification area there, and this map shows the existing zoning is lot manufacturing, and so that was some of the discussion at the Planning Commission, is that if you don't rezone this, it would remain lot manufacturing, and you can imagine some of the, everything from warehousing to actual industrial services type uses could go on those properties. It is currently, in our vision plan, is commercial, but part of this request would be to change that to allow for the residential. We did send the 15 notices out to the surrounding property owners within 200 feet. None in favor and one in opposition.
May I ask, because it backs up to Goodfellow Air Force Base, did we send notifications to Goodfellow Air Force Base?
That's a good question. I actually don't know the answer if...
Because it back up to the fence line of Goodfellow Air Force Base, and so I would have thought there would have been notification issues.
The, the answer is, if that shows up as a property per the appraisal district, what we're required to send is notices to the listed property owner per the appraisal district. I'm assuming that that means Goodfellow got one, but for example, if for city-owned property, there would be a notice, the city shows up as the owner of the fire station property across the street. But actually, that's a wrinkle that I have not come across before, so I don't, I'm not 100% sure that Goodfellow got notice. But I will say, we did meet the statutory requirement, because we use the appraisal district's official tax roll, and so if they are on that official tax roll, they did get a notice.
Mayor?
Yes, Tommy.
I don't know whether they got the official notice. They were aware. I talked to a gentleman yesterday who is a civilian on base and deals with real estate and other things, and he was aware of this zone change request. So I don't, again, I don't know if that was through official notice or through other means, but they were aware.
I just noticed on the documents. Anyway, doesn't matter. Move forward.
So as I mentioned, staff does recommend approval of the change to the comprehensive plan from commercial to neighborhood, as well as the rezoning from lot manufacturing to RS3. Just a reminder, RS3 allows zero-lot-line homes, town homes, and twin homes. Again, twin homes are basically just a duplex, but that is split with a property line. Town homes are similar, but you can have between three and eight units all attached. And zero-lot line are basically single-family, but on one side, they're right up against the property.
May I ask a question because of, of comments that people have made to me, and that is the following, that you're only, there was assumption by many people that it was not only that property, but the property on the other side of the street where there's tremendous flooding issues, or drainage issues, or something. But this specific piece of land does not have those same drainage issues that the one across the street has. Is that correct?
I'm not fully aware of all the drainage issues, but I will note that there is, you can see this little piece here, that is not actually a lot. That is the drainage easement, because drainage coming from the base comes across this property, and so that gets it out to the street. Now, as with any development, when this develops, they will have to address drainage. They basically, in short, they can't create more drainage off-site than it was pre-development, so they'll have to do detention or some other mechanism to ensure that they're not making the problem worse. By the same token, they don't have to make an existing problem better, but they can't make it any worse.
That just needs to be said, so that people understand drainage would be addressed.
Yes, right. At their August meeting, the Planning Commission did vote on this. They voted a 5-2 to approve, so it wasn't unanimous, but it was a majority vote to approve. That's it, if you have any questions.
Does Council have questions for John? Larry?
Do you have any idea why the two members were opposed?
Largely concerns about traffic, just density of development, the, you know, with 15 homes versus if, you know, if you developed a single-family, it would be a few less, and so just additional parking, maybe cars parking in the street, traffic. Where are the kids going to play was one of the questions of, you know, because these are, these are pretty tight. Those are not very deep lots.
Unentrance garages?
That'd be a question for the developers. Zoning doesn't define how they do that. I suspect there's not sufficient room to have that sort of rear-entry type garage.
Karen?
Yes, ma'am. Larry, thank you for asking your question. That was part of my concern. I, I would say that the overarching idea is a good one, but the density is too much for me to approve. I, I think that 15 units on that strip, given all the things that have been mentioned, parking, safety, drainage, 15 is too many for me.
Further comment?
Mayor, I have had more than several conversations with different folks. I mentioned the, the gentleman at the base yesterday. One of my questions was need for something like this around town, and then I have also visited with three different realtors. The gentleman at the base yesterday indicated this would be good housing for the NCOs as a beginning house, starter home, or for, starter home for others in the community. I also have visited with a developer on this. I'm not going to put words in the developer's mouth, but my assumption was in visiting about this was that in order to make this work, just by the sheer investment that he has already made, but will continue to make with respect to, I've also talked to the engineer on the project. To your point, Mayor, about the drainage, the engineer is fully aware of the drainage issues and was going to do, it sounded to me, a little additional modeling from an engineering standpoint to address the drainage, because the engineer was aware of that, I think, across the street as well. I found it a little interesting in talking to one of the realtors. This particular realtor partners with a builder in town, that this is the, they are doing something similar around town, these, I'm going to say, smaller homes in, in a more dense fashion than what we typically think of as single-family homes, and he said, for them, their experience, and he wasn't speaking for anybody else, but their experience was, they didn't even have to market these. They became sold, if you will, as they were completing them, just simply due to the demand.
And the housing study also that we paid for indicated strong need for duplex town home buildings to happen, that we had a very low level, low number of town home duplexes, and that this was a big need for not just Goodfellow Air Force Base, but the city as a whole.
As, as John mentioned, we, we're just being asked to approve zoning here. The, we're, we're not talking about approving an elevation plan or anything like that. That's not part of what we're asked to do. But I have looked at some of the developers' other properties around town that have been developed, and it, they appear to me to be single-family homes, that you can, I'll say, clearly see they are single-family homes. They're just accommodated to fit a much, I'll say, thinner footprint than what we think of as a typical, single-family home.
Because of infill?
Yes.
Because those lots are left over like that?
Absolutely. So again, I think the developers here, they can speak on their own behalf, but due to the investment that the developer has already made, will continue to make, the developers got to put in the water and sewer. The developers got to make sure that the drainage through their engineer. So with the investment and plus the purchase price of the property, I, I see this as a, an appropriate use of, of the property.
Yes, Harry?
One of the concerns I've heard is the increased amount of traffic, especially around the fire station. I think Chief Brody's here. Would he come forward and talk about that?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. I actually drove out there yesterday, because I wanted to put, you know, eyes on it and boots on the ground. I actually parked across the street, right here. Yes, right there, and measured from my, edge of my truck all the way to the ramp of the fire station, 30 feet. Went inside, talked to the guys at the station, asked them to duplicate what, what would happen in the event of emergency, and there was people parked on the street. There's plenty of clearance. Drainage issue, so we have an angle of departure as we're exiting the fire station, the ramp, the front bumper comes real close, and the more you angle coming out of that station, it could potentially, so if there is a car parked and then a car in that lane of traffic, we would not be able to make that corner, because it causes too much of a turning radius. But if there's not, if both lanes of traffic are clear and only one car parked on that side of the street, then we had clearance. So I am concerned a little bit about the compactness of how many, how many houses are going to be in this era, area. Zero lot line concerns me. Spread of fire from one unit to another unit to another unit, and 15 units in that small, compact space does concern me. Traffic flow does not concern me as much as the compactness of the neighborhood. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Further public comment?
Edwin Guthrie, District 1. As the chief stated, he's not concerned too much as the, the traffic on Edgewood coming out of the firehouse, but for those that are not familiar with the area, at 8:00 in the morning, if you're going down Edgewood to make a left to go to the south gate of the base, that center turn lane on South Chadbourne is completely backed up to the firehouse. So you're unable to come to the stop sign here and make a left to go to the base because of the high volume of traffic at 8:00 in the morning. I'm opposed to the development, only for if it was residential one, single-family units would be fine, but the density of this and this fence line of the base, there's no buffer zone. In the entire perimeter of the base, there's either a natural barrier, an alleyway, or an easement of at least 12 feet between the public access and the base fence. Also, on the, Edgewood is a high point of this town, so all the water that comes down Edgewood also ends into this lot beside the lot across the street y'all were talking about earlier. The alleyway on the, here, and it makes a hard sharp back into Edgewood, continually ruts out, because it's a dirt alleyway, and washes out the perimeter bottom of the security fence at the base, where they continually bring in rocks and gravel and backfill after every, after every rain. The narrowness of this with the density of 15 units, I, I just think it's too much. I live in the neighborhood directly. It won't directly affect me, because I'm far enough down the road. It won't be bothered, but I think the density of the amount of number of units and the drainage, along with the morning traffic, will become a nightmare. And also, earlier last year, when the gate, the south gate was being worked on, and the north gate was the only one available, all the, all the, the normal traffic realized they could cut through our neighborhood to bypass the light at Chadbourne and Cristovol, and now I'm getting commercial traffic actually cutting through there also. That's, that's my concern. Thank you.
Good morning. Zane Willard with Contra Valley Construction. A little history, when, when the property became available for sale, we consulted with the city, with the Planning Department, asked them what their preference was if we were to purchase this, if they would support a, you know, residential versus light manufacturing. They, they definitely said we did. We're, we're very cognizant of the fact that your housing study, as you mentioned earlier, Ms. Mayor, that there's a need for more affordable housing. The next thing that we did, we consulted with the base, because we realized the need for housing. This was an appropriate area for it. It fits into where they need. One of the things that they've made clear to us multiple times is that one of the biggest constraints they have for people to come to San Angelo is, especially if they have to, to, to buy something, is fitting the price point. You know, it's, it's, this allows us to do that. Then we go and look at the, the ordinances that state what you can do, and so what we did was follow the city's ordinances, and one of the things that I've heard at Planning Commission and City Council is especially for the, the reason we've proposed twin RS3 or RM1, is it's a good transition area between commercial and residential, and that's what's been stated many, many times. And so, as we talked to the engineers and we talked to the city staff, we said, this is the perfect area, instead of a, which could cause more traffic and drainage issues, instead of a big manufacturing facility being right at the edge of a residential neighborhood, let's transition from regular single-family homes to twin homes, which is probably what we're going to do. That's what we've drawn up, and that's what we're looking at. In addition to that, we provide a price point that fits what the constituency needs. We'll deal with the drainage issues. There's already a drainage study being done right now. We are finding a way where we're going to put the water out. We'll build this up, and we'll make high-quality, affordable housing for the, for the residents of San Angelo, and that's the reason. There was a lot of due diligence put into this before we brought it forth and took it to Planning Commission. I understand many of the concerns, but our job is to try to find a resolution to fix some problems, instead of a, I think it was about two acres. You know, it's been abandoned for a long time, and somebody's out there mowing it. We, we want to add value to the city, add value to the constituency, and do something that, that makes a, a nice transition from, from commercial into residential. Any questions?
Questions for Zane?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I still like the overarching idea. No concerns about that, and everything you've said is very helpful, so thank you for sharing your process with us. It helps us see the big picture. You have indicated that you think you're going to put in 15 units. What would stop you from making 15 into 30 by making it two stories?
Zoning will not allow it, so there, there's no, there's no possibility of zoning. I take pride in, in whenever we go, there, there's two houses we built on Avenue T, 413 and 4, I can't, I don't remember the other address, and, and they were on those smaller lots, so we made skinnier houses, and we try to, try to make the yard be the sideyard. My personal opinion is, is that in the city of San Angelo, we, we live in the perpetual state of drought, so the less yard we can have, but the more usable the yard space is, the, the better it is for the people that live there, because it disheartening when you drive through in July and everybody's yard's browned out, because they, water restrictions, and they can't afford the water bill. So the way we've designed these is that they will set on the property line. You'll have more of a sideyard. It gives us room to push them back, so that we get plenty of off-street parking. There'll be a two-car garage. They'll have four parking spots, so to help the fire station, everybody will have four spots off-street to get their vehicles off of the, the street. They have a nice sideyard. There is an alley in the back, back there, but the, the possibility of making them 30 residences, the zoning will not allow that. So the only, there'll be single-family homes, just on a slightly more narrow lot, following the city ordinance. That's what, you know, what, what the Planning Department has passed in years past, and that's what we designed it to, 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 to fit the need of what that would allow. Mr. Hebert mentioned earlier, we had talked about the cost to develop this. We're adding the water line, the extension for the water line, the extension for the sewer line. We're doing the drainage study, so it's more than just the cost of the land. There's a lot of other improvements that we have to add to make this property buildable.
Garages and driveways are in the front. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I don't think the alley's wide enough for them to go down and turn in, so yes, it would be, but I think the, the standard zoning for, for what we've got here is a 15-foot setback. The way we've drawn them has 25-foot, which is standard for most RS1 houses, so we're going to push them back 25 feet to make sure that you have enough parking off-street to get two cars off, plus, just in case, I know most people don't do this, but fill the garage up with a bunch of stuff, you know, that still gives them room.
Who does that?
I was going to use another word, but that wasn't the right word, so yeah.
We have that, too. Other questions, Karen? All right, may I have a motion for approval?
Mayor, make a motion to approve as presented.
Second by Lucy. Oh, there's a motion, a second now open for more public comment. It's all right. You're all right. We still have time.
My name's Steve Lawson. I live, happen to live in that area. I, I've heard a lot of talk about the economic viability of this project, but I, I haven't heard much about the people that live there. I haven't heard much about the people that are going to live there and where their kids are going to play. Are they going to play in the street with a fire station right across the street? What's the economic impact to the people's homes there? Are the values going to go up with this type of building project? Have you spoken to anybody in that area? Not just the base. I'm a veteran. I've served 27 years. I understand what's going on base. They have plenty of room there. To do this and to consider this type of construction in a single-family residential area is just kind of disheartening, sir. And I, I don't think it's safe. I don't think it's good for the firehouse, as the gentleman said, and as you can tell, I'm kind of emotional about it. I've been in my house for 30 years there. I'm a veteran. That's where I chose to live, and there's a lot of other veterans with families and people that are currently assigned to the base there. And the traffic, you heard the gentleman talk about that. It's just not in the morning. It's in the evenings with people coming to and from the base. I would hate to see even one child that's playing out in front of their home like they should be, struck by a vehicle. I just think it's not a viable option for that 1.8 acres. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Further public comment? There has been a motion and a second, but it is open for further public comment. Okay, with no more public comment, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of approving the zoning change, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six one. We will now move back. Now, we could take a break for lunch. We're going to take a break for lunch. We will come back in 30 minutes, so we'll be back here at 12:15. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and I'm going to read the executive session items, so Executive Session under Provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.072, Discussion Regarding Response to RFPRE-01-23, Sarah R. Robertson, Survey 178. Item B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Commercial Lease and Possible Sell of Lots 2 and 3, Block 1, Group Middle Concho, Lake Nowsworthie Edition. And Item C, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Santa Fe Train Depot. At this time, we are adjourned for an hour, or, or, we're adjourned. We'll be back when we're through with business. We're at 1:29 PM on Tuesday, September the 19th. We have completed our executive session, and Karen has an announcement to make.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the lease to Historic Orient Santa Fe Depot Incorporated to allow them to request hot fund, funding.
I second that motion.
Public comment?
Can you add-
When do we make, when do we add to that, but we have to see performance paper, P and L?
If you want to talk about that during the budget portion, that we're fixing to address. If you could add to that motion, authorizing Daniel to negotiate and execute that amendment, so it doesn't come up. Or Michael Dane, I'm sorry, Michael.
Okay.
City manager, designate, whoever.
And authorizing Assistant City Manager-
And authorizing Assistant City Manager Michael Dane to negotiate terms of, and execute terms of the lease.
And then during budget session, we will discuss, um, the requirement for providing P and L and board, um, positions, people, board positions on the people, uh, on the board. Okay. With that, there's a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. We will now move back up in the agenda to item C. Discussion Related to a Rolling Debt Program to Provide Funds for Public Safety and Other Equipment Replacement. Tina, you are finally on, girl.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Deersky, Director of Finance. You'll recall during our, um, General Fund Budget Workshop, we discussed a program that the city has utilized in the past. It's called, I guess, uh, it's called a rolling debt program and it's, um, used to pay for equipment replacement, public safety equipment, things like that, that the city needs on an ongoing basis. And we do have Vince Viall from Specialized Public Finance. He has come to the meeting today to kind of walk y'all through how that program would work and what kind of impact it would have on our debt capacity. So I'll, I'll have him come up and kind of go through that with you.
Mayor, council members, good afternoon. My name is Vince Viall with Specialized Public Finance for the city's financial advisor. I'd like to visit with the council today about a rolling debt or rolling net note program and answer any questions y'all may have about how it works and make sure y'all understand the concept so if we want to implement this program in the future, we're comfortable moving forward with it. So a rolling note or a rolling debt program enables us to issue notes on a periodic basis. The model that we've looked at in this case is issuing notes every other year, starting in 2024. So we would have note issuances in 2024, 26, 28, et cetera. This program is totally driven by the council. You've got the ability to pull it back or accelerate it at any time that you wish. The note proceeds are basically used to purchase short-life type assets that you would not want to finance on a long-term basis, such as city fleet needs, uh, maintenance, operation equipment, things of that nature that have a short lifespan, because these notes have a very short lifespan. We issue these notes typically with a two, sometimes maybe a three-year maturity, and they pay off at the end of that time. That's what enables us to keep this pro, program rolling. As soon as we pay off one of the note issues, we come behind it with another one and issue another note. So we're always raising capital for these type of expense items, again, that have a short lifespan, as do the term of the notes. Now, currently, we've dedicated 11.4 cents on our tax rate for the interest and sinking fund. What we've looked at in our model is allocating two cents out of that 11.4 cents and trying to determine what size of a rolling note program that would generate for the city. So if we start our first note issue in 2024, what we're looking at, again, about every other year, is give or take about a $3 million note issue for this program. Now, that's going to be dictated by the size of the tax base growth within the city. As the tax base gets larger, that two cents is going to generate more revenue. We could expand the note program if we wished. Again, council has total discretion on when you issue the notes, for what purposes, how much, things of that nature. But again, this is just a method by which we can finance short yearly life-type improvements for the city that would match a short amortization for the debt that's issued to finance that. I'm happy to try to answer any questions the council may have.
Do you describe that again?
We're doing short-term financing for short-term projects.
Easy said.
Yes, ma'am.
Question?
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Tommy.
And she have talks, talked to us in the past about our capacity.
Yes, sir.
How does this impact our capacity for a larger debt issuance for the, for the large capital project that we, we do have from time to time? How does this impact that, or does it?
It does. It's a very good question.
That would be, with that, Tommy, like, what's the difference between big and small? I mean, doing this, short-term rate, short-term, is there a dollar limit to this?
And if, if, I'm assuming we'd have to work with you, if we anticipate a large capital expenditure that we know we're going to have, we would have to work with you closely on a, on, on the rolling debt program so that we didn't impact adversely the, our ability to, to finance a larger, a larger capital project.
Yes, sir. And I think I understand your question. Let me take a stab at it and make sure I answer it sufficiently. So again, what we're doing is we're allocating two cents of the interest and sinking fund tax rate of our 11.4 cents that we currently utilize for debt service payments. That two cents would be utilized for this rolling note program. If we were to look at doing a larger capital expense item, a couple of factors come into play. One, will the debt service on that larger capital item be paid for out of the 11.4 cent INES tax rate? Or two, will it be a water and sewer system improvement that will be paid out of water and sewer system revenues? So we have to make that decision on how we're going to pay for that larger capital expense item. The rolling note program will certainly have an implication upon our capacity in the future. Uh, again, we're looking at give or take about $3 million in a note program every other year for our capital expense items. Right now, based upon our current tax base, if we implement this program, uh, starting in 2024, and we have got set aside right now a $16 million street program issue in 2024, what that allows us, based upon current information that we have, gives us additional capacity beyond the note program, beyond the 16 million of, give or take, $35 million that we could use within that 11.4 cents. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. You, you, you're, you're, you're two steps ahead of me because I was going to go down the path of what additional capacity could we have above and beyond? So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yes, Tom.
So let's say you compare us to other cities. Other cities within our size have the same problems. Are they doing the same thing that you work with?
Most of our, most of my clients are, especially cities and school districts. One of the things you have to keep in mind is the interest and sinking fund portion of your tax rate is not subject to rollback. It's not subject to revenue compression. So whatever O and M items that we can flip onto the INES side and finance those, that would free up those O and M dollars for other city uses.
This is clearly a cash flow management tool to our benefit to, to do something like this, to have more dollars available in our, uh, general fund revenue stream, to do something like this rather than having to, I say having to, we have, uh, over the past several years, uh, paid cash for things, which is not a bad thing.
Correct.
But this gives us, uh, some more flexibility that we don't now have to pay for some of these things and, and manage those cash flows.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Harry, you're doing a lot of nodding, so go ahead and add comment.
Well, I, I just want to say that, uh, fortunately, I understand this. And I am definitely in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from council? Okay. So with that, do I need a motion for approval of this?
Actually, this is just an information item only.
Okay.
For council information, uh, we will bring this program back to the council for future consideration and authorization to pursue at a later date. Once we determine how much you're going to want on that first program, uh, council will then decide and give us authorization to move forward.
Okay.
I want to thank you all for y'all's time.
Everybody understand?
For yours.
Yeah. Thanks for waiting.
Pleasure to be here.
Learned a lot about us, didn't you?
More than you wanted to know.
Enjoyed that drive.
All right. So we go on to item C, D, and E. Do I read them all at once or do I have to do them individual?
This first one is just that short-term note, um, that we talked about at the last meeting, that we would use as a one-time funding source for, uh, grant match or other needs as council deems necessary. So this one is just, um, we did receive the bids back on the interest rates, came in at 5.24 percent. And so this is just that final step of approving that short-term debt issue.
Which is what he just discussed.
That was the one for next year that he just discussed. So this is-
It's the same problem.
Along the same lines, yeah.
All right. So we don't need?
Do we need a motion on this?
Need a motion?
Do you need a vote on this one?
So move.
Second.
Motion is by Harry and a second by Tommy. Public comment? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Item D. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 1,871,755 or 3.8 percent increase. And of that amount, 812,634 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. And my first question, of course, is going to be, we're confident in these numbers, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We're not going to wake up and have a shock with a number?
I sure hope not. No, I, I feel like we're pretty confident with them.
We've reviewed every specific thing we need to with the tax appraisal district.
We've reviewed it. We've sent it back multiple, multiple times, um, and we're at a point where we feel like we're, we're in a good place, so.
Okay. So with that, do I have a motion?
I need, uh, this one has to be a, a record vote, which means individually.
So what do we read?
Just the caption.
Someone can still make a motion, someone can second, but then voting, go down the line where each one individually gives their a or n.
So do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Good morning or afternoon. Susanna Valenzuela, President of the Royal Museum, and I wanted to make a request for $25,000 in hot tax for the Royal Museum now that our contract has been amended. And I want to say thank you for doing that and I'm really happy for San Angelo.
We need to still see profit and loss statements from last year and the first six months, so not just your-
I'll have it today.
That's got to be a request and we need to see all your board members current.
Yes, I'll have that as well. You want me to turn it in to the city clerk?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, we can do that.
So those things have to be done.
Yes, today. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on that?
We will, but there's-
So if council directs us to include that $25,000 in the hot budget for FY '24, um, I think we'll go and, uh, talking with Teresa, we'll adopt the budget as is and then bring that back as a budget amendment once the contract has been amended.
That's what I was asking for before.
Okay. What, yeah, and what she'll bring back is the agreement regarding that hot tax that spells out all the requirements like we do for all the organizations.
What I asked for before.
All right. With that, there's a motion and a second and public comment now. We're going to individually say yea or nay to item E. No, I'm seeing item D. So you're going to say yea or nay. Tommy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. So motion passes seven to zero.
And to be clear, we are directed to bring back that $25,000 at the next meeting?
You are.
The next meeting.
Thank you.
So directed.
Item E, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance fixing and leveling ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use and support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas for the 2023, 2024 budget year, providing for the assessment collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Again, like you said, second public hearing of, um, the ordinance, uh, levering, levying the property tax for 2023 tax year. The proposed rate is 0.7042 cents per $100 valuation. That is, again, a 3.38 cent decrease from last year's property tax rate. I need this, um, caption read into the motion, please.
By each person or just by me?
By one person and then a second and then-
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.7042 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 7.24 percent increase in the tax rate, but, period. But the actual decrease in the tax rate is .338. Is that right?
Yes, 0.0338.
That's what the public will see.
Yes, 3.38 cent decrease on your property tax rate from the city.
All right. With that, may I have a motion?
A second?
And a second.
Second by Harry.
And public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Individually?
This one does not have to be.
All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven, zero. We will move to follow-up and administrative issues. The last one is item B. So consider approving various board nominations. ADA Advisory Committee is Jordan Dill Dieborn, Diebone, to a first term ending April 2025. Then a Design and Historic Review Commission, David Majore, the mayor, to a third term. Kenna Archer, SMD II, and Donna Crisp, SMD V, to a first full term, all ending September 2025. And then the Public Arts Commission, Mark Stevenson, which is SMD I, to first term ending April 2025. May I have a motion for those to be approved?
May be approved.
By Lucy, seconded by Larry. Thank you for that. Any public comment on those nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.